Most of.
Nobody's mad at you, Mayor. Nobody.
Okay, first item on the agenda, telecommunication ordinance update. And Mr. City Manager, is this something you want to tee us off on?
I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, you were probably aware and recall the discussion briefly that was had with regard to the vulnerabilities we have as a community in light of the number of changes that are occurring at the FCC level, particularly in relation to the erection of towers and telecommunications infrastructure generally within communities as a result. The effort that council authorized with the hiring of River Oaks Communications was that of preparing an ordinance that would better protect the interests of our community in regards to the changes and the landscape that is now different pursuant to rules through the FCC. We have a status update this evening for you. You've also been given a preliminary draft with regard to what I would consider a pretty dense or thorough ordinance in regards to the description of the job at hand that I just provided you. Tonight is an information-only exercise, again, a status update in preparation for bringing you a final draft with regard to the ordinance in question and the protections we would propose on an ordinance basis be adopted here at some point in the near future. With that, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could defer to the City Attorney's Office and Mr. Douchin, hopefully I didn't mispronounce that.
That's fine, thank you.
From River Oaks Communications to walk us through the bulk of what ultimately would be proposed to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm pleased to be here. I'm Bob Douchin, Vice President of River Oaks Communications Corporation. We're based out of Denver. We're working with a number of communities in Wyoming on wireless matters and cable television matters, for example, Gillette, Sheridan, and Cheyenne. Our current work in this area includes states and the surrounding area, Idaho, North Dakota, South Dakota, into Nebraska, down to New Mexico, for example, and over into Utah. This is a very complex area. I've had the pleasure of working in this space for 30 years. I started, I'm a lawyer by background, I do the legal speak. We'll touch on my bio briefly, but more importantly, I want to talk about why I'm here and why this is important to your community. I started in this space 30 years ago, in the cable television area. I worked through, through a number of franchises, hundreds of franchises. What's happened is the businesses moved from cable television to now with providers doing the triple play, video voice and video, to broadband, to wireless, and now to small cells. I can't begin to tell you all of the complexities. I know I've only got 20 minutes, we could be here for hours talking about the complexities of the federal laws and rules. I want to share with you what we've been working on and why this is important to your community and the benefits you're all going to see from this work. I'd like to thank Wallace and members of the City Attorney's Office for this, for his dedication to this, to this matter, and we've got more work to do. So what are small cells? Going back to when this industry first morphed, people were worried about macro towers, large towers, 100, 120-foot towers, they could have guy wires on them, they could be monopoles. The industry has moved from a concern about small, about macro coverage issues to capacity issues. And let me explain what I mean about that. We all use our iPhones or cellphones for video, voice, and data. The phones simply are over-matching the networks. What happens here, what's going to happen, is that you're going to be approached by providers such as Mobility that wants to put large poles in your community, or Verizon Wireless who wants to deploy small cells so that they can infill. They need to have enough gear out there from a capacity standpoint to handle all the traffic over these cellphones. So what are small cells? It's not what you may think. Small cells, not that the equipment's going to be small in nature, but the area it covers is small. And to do that, these facilities have to be deployed not just within one-mile radius of each other, but sometimes within 300 to 900 feet of each other. So if someone comes to Casper and says, "I want to put in a small cell," it's going to be very important for the City Attorney's Office and planning to say, "Show me a photo sim of what you're talking about. Show me the antenna that's going to go on top of a light pole. Show me the equipment cabinet that's going to be at the base of the light pole." The enclosure that's around the woman on the PowerPoint, that's 28 cubic feet. If you look at state legislation elsewhere, like they've tried to pass in other states, that technically is a small cell. That's, I can't begin to impress upon you, you don't want things that look at the size of a refrigerator that's based on one of these poles. And, and that could happen in other states, and we don't want it to happen here. This is an example of a small cell facility. I don't know about you all, and I'm not the engineer, but for me, beauty is not in the eye of the beholder on this one. I mean, just look at that, that's, that's just not pretty. That's a small cell deployment, okay? The providers can do a lot better than that, and I'm going to show you what I mean as we go through this PowerPoint. That's another small cell facility. You don't want a bunch of equipment hanging off the side of a pole that's aesthetically unpleasing, and that's one of the things that this ordinance is designed to guard against. That's another example of a small cell facility on a pole. Again, if that were outside my house, not so good, okay? And this is the real deal. I got a call from a lawyer in California who is livid. Verizon wants to deploy 16 small cell facilities in his community, and one of them is going to be 30 feet from his living room, okay? So this is not a hypothetical. That's another small cell facility. I don't know about you all, I'm not very artistic, but for me, that is not, that doesn't do it, okay? So that's why this discussion is so important. A little bit more about who we are. I mentioned we're Colorado-based. Our work has taken us to 38 states, we've worked on projects, I should say, in 38 states. We've worked with hundreds of local governments, I'm the co-founder of our organization. I went to law school out at UVA, and I'm a frequent webinar presenter and author. I've written articles for municipal leagues. I testified in Nebraska on behalf of the League of Nebraska Municipalities against legislation, bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Against legislation that was being proposed by industry. We're helping the Indiana League, it's called AIM there, fight what's on the books now. This is a very specialized area. This is a niche area, and it's only getting more complicated because you have local rules, state legislation, and you have proceedings pending right now at the FCC that are going to have an impact on what happens here in Casper and elsewhere. Briefly, I'm not going to get down in the weeds on this, we've got 20 minutes. You've got, for cable television regulation, you've got the Cable Acts of '84 and '92. For the telephone business, you've got the Telecom Act of '96, that was intended to create more competition. The third bullet point's not a typo. Buried in the Middle Class Tax Relief Act is what's called an eligible facilities request. We're going to talk about three-shot clocks under federal law. If someone comes into Casper and says they've got an eligible facilities request, they want to do a co-location on an existing tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical characteristics of the existing tower or base station, you've got 60 days to say yes or no. And if you don't act on it, there's a deemed granted remedy under federal law, that request is automatically granted. That's why this is so important. There are two other shot clocks that don't have deemed granted remedies, this one does. It's called a Section 6409a request. There was a wireless order that came out in 2014. It's 155 pages long with hundreds of footnotes. If you have trouble falling asleep at night, I highly recommend this. This will do the trick for you, okay? There were federal rules that came out after the FCC order, and now, after all this, the providers have gone to the FCC and said, "Cities are slowing us down. They're asking for too many things, they're asking for too much compensation." So there are federal proceedings going on right now which are going to impact what cities can and can't do. Here's one example, it's Section 253A. Here's what you need to know. You can require compensation on a competitively neutral and non-discriminatory basis, but you can't unreasonably discriminate amongst providers. Here's Section 332(c)(7). Why is this important? It's important because you cannot prohibit, or unreasonably prohibit, the deployment of personal wireless service facilities. What's that mean? You can't say to Verizon Wireless, "We don't want you." You can't say to T-Mobile, "Get out of town." You need to figure out a way to work with the providers or you're going to wind up in litigation. Believe me, that litigation is going to cost a lot more than whatever it costs to put together this wireless ordinance, okay? Some pertinent considerations before we get to the ordinance itself. You still have a lot of authority. I, I'm going to stress this once, don't let a provider come in here and tell you you've lost your authority under federal law. The rules and the statutes are designed so that there's a preservation of local zoning authority, okay? You've got to understand your rights, you've got to know what you can and can't do, but the point is, you still have a lot to say in terms of what's coming into your community. We talked about the reasons for the deployment of small cells, the explosive growth and capacity issues. Let me get to the last bullet point. And here's what cities are facing all over this country. Your zoning ordinance goes back to 2005. Nobody knew what a small cell was in 2005, okay? Nobody knew about stealthing to the extent they do now. Your ordinance, and it's not a critique, it's, it's 12 years old, and that's why we're here. We're here to update it and to modernize it and to make sure it comports with federal laws and rules and regulations. So let's talk about the ordinance, and I'm just going to hit some of the high points. I am not anti-technology. I've, I've negotiated with Verizon, with Crown Castle, I've dealt with Comcast and Time Warner and the household names in a lot of different places. We want the technology, and your citizens are going to demand the technology. The question is, how do you get there in a rational way? How do you do this so the aesthetics of the community are not compromised, okay? So some of the things this ordinance is designed to do is to encourage the deployment of the new technologies. We're going to make it less procedurally complex if they're going to do small cells versus putting in a macro tower, okay? We're going to provision for small cells in this ordinance. We're going to help preserve the aesthetics of the community, you still have a lot of control there. We're going to help generate revenues for the city. This can be a revenue generator for you, just so you know. It's not a free ride for the providers. When somebody comes in here and tells you they only want to pay you 150 bucks per small cell site, talk to Wallace, okay? And have him give me a shout. Let me give you an idea, in Lincoln, Nebraska, Verizon agreed to $1,900 a pole a site. Verizon now is trying to push $150 a site on the small communities in, in many states, okay? Glendale, Arizona is getting up to $3,000 a site. I'm not going to blue-sky this, I'm not saying you should say 3,000 or 1,900, but for goodness sakes, the providers need to do this in an equitable way. And you need to say to yourself, "This is valuable public property, this is your rights away." Is it really only worth 150 bucks a site? How, how much money is Verizon going to make off that one site, off the traffic that goes through it, okay? Something to think about. The timeframes, briefly, I mentioned the 60-day shot clock. If something's a substantial modification to an existing tower or base station, there's a 90-day co-location shot clock, and there's 150-day shock if somebody wants to put up a new side or tower. Why does this matter? On the latter two shot clocks, there's no deemed granted remedy. If you don't act, it's not an automatic okay from the city. It's the first one you've really got to be careful of, okay? And I just had a conversation with another jurisdiction which will go unnamed, and we're wrestling with that very problem right now. What happens? Somebody comes in, files an application in the planning department, nobody's, you know, this is, you know, with all due respect, it's not up to the planners to say, "Is this a 60, or 90, or 150-day shot clock?" The providers ought to be telling you this. But if they don't, you need to be aware so you guys can make informed decisions. And state law comes into play, and I will tell you, I was up at the, the conference with WAM and Gillette presenting on just what I'm talking about now, 1st of June. You guys are lucky, you guys don't have state legislation. If I showed you what's on the books in Indiana and what was on the books in Ohio, and how about 50 bucks a site in Arizona, okay, it's awful. You're not going to do better with state legislation. For goodness sakes, talk to Rick, the Executive Director over at WAM. If somebody shows up here and be talking with other communities, I have yet to see state legislation, I've seen the Virginia legislation, I, I'm sorry to tell you, but it's just not good, okay? So please, talk to your legislators and talk to other cities around the state. We talked about the FCC order. This is what I was talking about in terms of a 6409 request. You've got to, you can't deny, and you must approve, an eligible facilities request if it doesn't substantially change the physical dimensions. We could spend hours talking about the six criteria, height, dimensions, equipment cabinets, stealthing, but that's not why I'm here. Let me show you how complicated this is. So what's a tower? Somebody wants to put in a pole, an ordinary 50-foot pole in your right-of-way. If that is going to be put in for the primary or sole purpose of holding communications facilities, that's a tower under federal law, okay? If you don't, if, if, when you walk away from this, you need to think beyond the box. What's a tower? Bells and whistles need to go off and say, "Okay, what's this mean for my community?" A, a pole is not just a pole. What's a base station? A base station can be a parking garage, it could be a hotel, it could be any building where there are presently antennas on the rooftop, okay? I've got this situation elsewhere in Wyoming right now. And let me go back to one other thing, and then I'm going to show you some good pictures. This is not gloom and doom, the sky is not falling. It's just a matter of being prepared as to how are you going to deal with this? And that's where the ordinance is intended to get you. If someone comes to you and wants you to rule on something in a zoning framework, that's your regulatory capacity. Somebody wants to go on your water towers, if it's property you own, you're acting in your proprietary capacity. There is no shot clock when you're acting in your proprietary capacity. Don't be rushed on a lease. If somebody wants to come and lease space on your water tanks or your water tower, okay? I'm going to go past, Cody, we helped, they were good, they approached by Mobility, the company wanted to put large towers in the right-of-way, what did we do? We worked with them on a hurry-up basis to get their ordinance in place because I was contacted about 10 days before the first reading, okay? Which was not easy, and I don't recommend that. I'm glad you guys are moving far in front of that, okay? But they were in a defensive posture, and we helped them update their wireless regs to deal with these sorts of requests. We've talked about examples from other states, these are some of the places where we've done this work. Let me show you what can be done. Here's the good news, here's the bright light, okay? Please look at the top of the pole and the bottom of the pole. Now look, that's a small cell facility. This can be done in a non-obtrusive way. The antenna can go on top, and the equipment cabinet can be built into the base of the tower, the base of the pole, excuse me. Same, this is in Las Vegas. If you're walking around in Las Vegas, you won't even see these facilities up and down the strip, but it shows you how they were designed to not, not be too obtrusive. Here's one that's not so good, okay? Here's one that's better. Look at the top and the bottom again, okay? And finally, look at the top of this light pole and the bottom of the pole. If you work with the providers and you do this on a collegial basis, and by the way, we do this in such a way, we try and create a balanced ordinance, okay? We want the providers to be here, but we want them to work with you, so this is going to work for your community on an aesthetic basis. I appreciate this opportunity, I am glad to field any questions that you might have, and I hope this has been informative.
Jesse, and then Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Douchin, on the ordinances that you drafted for us to consider, I just had a question, did you cover any of the form-based code that we have in the OID area?
The answer is, I looked at your old code, and, and the OID area, the answer is yes.
Okay.
I put in language in the ordinance that covers the OID area. Now, as I understand, there are separate zoning districts unto themselves.
Right.
However, we have referenced them in here in terms of what is allowed and what is not allowed. So the answer, council member, is yes.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've spent over the years a lot of money in trying to get our utilities underground from both a reliability standpoint and the way it looks standpoint. So a lot of our, a lot of our developments, if you will, don't have any poles sticking up at all. And these will go in utility right-of-ways if we don't do something, is that a reasonable statement?
The answer is yes. Now, the answer is yes, where you don't have any above-ground aerial facilities, that becomes a complicated matter because for these facilities to work, the antenna needs to be above ground. And, and I know, I'm not trying to state the obvious, the equipment cabinets could go underground, but the providers are not going to want to do that because it's expensive and they're going to be considered, they're going to be concerned about moisture, those two things. So those are the sorts of things where you're really going to need to work closely with staff and the providers to see what is a workable solution, because that, that could be very problematic. And we've got the dilemma where we can't prohibit or effectively prohibit the deployment of these facilities. Let me tell you what could happen, somebody could come in and say, "I've got to go on that right-of-way," okay? Then you get into the court case, what's it say? It says that if, if the provider can show there's a gap in coverage, and they're showing that what they're doing is the least intrusive means to fill that gap in coverage, the court's going to support them on that. So we've got court cases we haven't even talked about out there that also come into play. So this is really, it's going to be a challenging exercise, not just for your city, but for other cities as well, especially where you don't have above-ground facilities. We will all do the best we can with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Charlie.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Douchin, could you explain the role of your company with respect to all of this? Are you strictly operating as a consultant, or do you have any connection with any kind of companies that, that market any of this equipment?
Council member, I'm glad to answer that question. We are serving strictly as a consultant to your community. You are our client, the city of Casper. We do not have a connection to Verizon or AT&amp;T. We are not promoing anybody's services, we're not favoring one company over another. We have worked with a number of companies, negotiating with companies, but no, we are, we are doing this as, as a consultant to a local government to help you put together this ordinance.
Just to follow up, in the ordinance, there are some statements in here that would be open to interpretation, such as, "Designed to minimize adverse visual impacts."
Right.
Who decides?
Council member, the, if this goes to the planning, it depends what sort of facility we're talking about. If this goes to the Planning Commission, they decide. If something comes to you all as the governing body because it's a tower over 100 feet tall, currently your coach says a tower over 200 feet tall, but we want to scale that back, you would decide, it's subjective. And then, hopefully, what I've found is if you work with the providers, if you sit down with them, you can come up with a reasonable solution. Ultimately, this could, you know, it could wind up in court. What does that mean? We, we don't want to hamstring your city by, by putting language in here that doesn't give you flexibility, but we also don't want to put so much discretion in here that a court can say, "Well, there, there are no guidelines at all." So we try and balance that approach, if that answers your, your question. It's the best, it's the best we can do. I wish I could...
We have some control.
I'm sorry?
We have some control.
Absolutely you do, absolutely, especially on the aesthetic side.
One more follow-up, Your Honor?
Sure.
I only lost it. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jesse.
Thank you. Just one quick question, after you mentioning, you know, you have to go or allow that tower to be placed with the, the least amount of, I guess, intrusive-ness for that right-of-way, for example. So the city of Casper, for example, we don't have a whole lot of fiber downtown, and they need fiber for these cell towers, and, and if they want to put it in a light structure, as you're aware. So how do we sit if, in fact, that demand, I guess, if the Verizon, Verizon, for example, if they see that demand in Casper and they would like to set that up in our downtown area, how would we sit with that? What could we do?
I'll tell you what we've done in this ordinance, this is a draft, okay? What we've said is we've put a prohibition against putting in macro cells in the downtown area.
Okay.
We've put in language that says if they're going to put in a tower, which I mentioned earlier, is a pole under federal law, okay? If it's built for this primary purpose of supporting the communications equipment, we're putting in stealthy requirements, okay? Now, I'm not going to tell you the industry's going to do cartwheels, okay? But that's what we've tried to do here, is we've tried to discourage the deployment of macro cells in residential areas, in the downtown area, in the OID area, for example, okay? And then when they're going to, if they need to put in something downtown, we'd really like them to put in a replacement pole that serves a dual function, that's in this ordinance. So it looks like a light pole, but it also is a communications, it holds communications facilities too. So we've creatively tried to approach this so that we haven't prohibited the, the services, however, we, we haven't given them free, free, free run of the territory.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I remembered.
Okay.
So the, the companies have choices as far as how they install this equipment. Is there an economic benefit to them to install this older, less attractive equipment? Is it less expensive for them to do that?
No, it's not. Actually, this is counterintuitive, but it's the opposite. They would spend more money trying to structurally engineer an old pole than to replace a pole. So this is good news. Verizon likes to put in replacement poles in, in terms, instead of re-engineering existing poles. So that's the way this technology is moving, and that's, that's a good thing. It's better for them and it's better for the community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so I understand this, conceptually, this is essentially 5G and it eventually will replace 4G, 3G, whatever, is that correct?
Well, it's, it's a combination. It's 4G moving to 5G, fifth generation. Will it completely replace 4G? I'm probably not the right person to answer that. I'm kind of in the wait-and-see category, because, because what I've seen providers do is get everybody excited about 5G and 4G's still here, and there's still 3G out there, okay? So this is the practical, me speaking. I, I have a question in my own mind as to how much this is going to be totally, how much is going to be replaced. But I'm, I'm not the engine, I'm not the engineer, so I can't fully address your question. I think we're a ways out. I think what the industry is doing is, I tell you this, I will share this with you, they're going to state legislatures and saying, "Let's pass this state legislation because that'll get 5G technology." Most people don't even know what 5G is, and they're getting, the legislatures all excited that, that somehow this is going to get 5G technology to be rural Nebraska or rural Wyoming, okay? That's not where you need 5G technology, you need coverage, okay? So from my perspective, I think we've got a ways to go before some of this replaces some of the existing technology, but that's, that is a layperson's, not, not engineering perspective.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Carter, do you want to tee us off on the next topic?
I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, thank you. Council has been asked, or is being asked, I guess you would say, to consider a resolution that supports a broader acceptance of diversity in the community. We have enclosed a draft resolution that could appear similar to what you would consider in a formal basis and use for potential adoption. What we want to be clear, however, is that tonight, you do not need to direct for adoption or not adoption, rather hear the presentation from the group called PFLAG, and determine whether or not you would like to see that resolution move forward for formal consideration in some form. And so that, that, that is the request this evening, to hear the presentation, hear the information, hear the justification and the need for such a resolution, and then determine if you would like to see it move forward for formal consideration at a later date that may potentially be as, as late as the new year. We do have members of the PFLAG organization here this evening, if, if it would please the council to have them share that information.
I wasn't sure which one of you were going to get the lucky straw to...
Possibly all of us, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Madam Mayor and council members, we are asking, we, we had originally wanted to...
We need, we need, we need your name and your address.
De隆berg, and my address.
That's usually what we ask.
Okay, 142 North Wilson Street, Casper. We had originally wanted to work on an ordinance, but we recognize that this is an uncomfortable issue for a lot of folks, and we wanted to be fair and reasonable, and we believe that regardless of one's religious preference or political affiliation, regardless if someone is entirely comfortable with the topic of sexuality or sexual... is entirely comfortable with the topic of sexuality or sexual orientation, that we as a city should be able to agree that discrimination against any group is unacceptable. We also believe that this is good for business, that it, there are lots of tech companies for interest, for instance, that are considering places like Wyoming, but really prefer to go to places where there are some kind of discrimination policies. And so we bring it to you not as an ordination, but as a good-faith statement by this city that discrimination is just not to be tolerated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rob Johnston, 503 South Beach Street here in Casper. I'm currently the president of PFLAG. The chapter here in Casper has been around for over 30 years, and I am the parent of a transgender youth. And one of the things that I think is really critical is that I think we lose good people because they don't feel necessarily safe or comfortable in this environment. I know that when I moved here, it's coming up on, in 2002, there were a lot of questions about why are you moving to Casper? And we moved here because my partner and I, his father, had a heart attack and a stroke, and we needed to be with him. I have felt very accepted in this community and very welcomed in this community, but I know of others who have left simply because they felt the opportunities were greater somewhere else, or they didn't feel as safe and secure. And I just think that this is an important, an affirming position to take as a community, that we support everyone. The reason that the language is, in this case, specific to lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals is because we feel that sometimes if it's not included, then it is excluded, and we don't want that to happen. I'm going to introduce Ruth Ann Leonard, who we refer to as our PFLAG mom.
I'm Ruth Ann Leonard. My address is 2600 Fleetwood Place, number 219 in Casper, and I have been a member of PFLAG for, I guess, about, not quite 30 years, but 20-some years, and former president. I have a gay son, and when he came out to us, we realized that he had experienced some discrimination in growing up here. He grew up and went to the schools here in Casper. And I just feel that if we don't pass a resolution like this, there's too many people that cannot come back to Casper and feel free to rent a home, buy a home, have a job here, that they can be fired at any time because of their sexual orientation. And I don't think that is the way that Casper should be. Thank you.
Questions from council? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rob, I support what you're getting at right here, and you said if it's not included, then it's implied that it could be excluded. Have you seen a resolution like this that does not specifically spell out any particular group, class, because of that reason, that does the whole thing? So, I mean, I could turn around what you were saying and say, "Well, okay, now we leave these guys out." And that's not your intent, it's not mine. Have you seen anything that works that doesn't have to have specific groups in it, I guess?
Well, I think our concern is that the City of Sheridan recently had a discussion on this issue, and their council voted to take out the language specific to gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender individuals. And as a member of that, and as a member of the community, we felt that what happens then is that I don't feel like my needs get addressed, and I think that's a concern. I think that what happens is, and I think the way the resolution is written, really, you know, I go back to the language that basically says, "The City of Casper in regular session duly assembled is the policy of the city to reject discrimination of any kind and to respect the inherent worth of every person without regard of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, identity, age, marital status, sexual orientation, family status, veteran status, disability, and source of income." And I think just the way that is worded is pretty inclusive of our community. We're not asking for special rights.
And the current policy does name some of those and excludes others. Go ahead.
You're referring to the current resolution? Right, up above where it says "whereas" and that kind of thing. I got a short glimpse of one that may or may not be what Cheyenne passed. Did it have, did it identify each group specifically? Are you familiar with it?
Cheyenne has actually put the discussion on hold. Some of their council members are basically waiting for the Supreme Court decision, and they were actually looking for an ordinance, not a resolution. And so that's the major difference between what we're asking for and what they were pursuing.
Man. And I'm sorry if I seem a little bit ignorant on this because I am. I don't know how many of, how many cities have actually passed this. I've heard Teton County or Jackson and then one other, I believe, Laramie.
Gillette passed a resolution similar to what we're asking for here. Laramie passed an ordinance. They're the only community in the state that has currently passed an ordinance. Jackson is pursuing an ordinance. That's kind of the status as we have it right now, and Cheyenne's on hold.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. And then the ordinance would basically provide some sanctions or say it's against violation of this ordinance could be sanctioned in some way if someone discriminates.
That's why we're not asking for an ordinance here.
Right, but that's what it would do.
That's what an ordinance would do.
And after much thought, we decided that we did not want to go into any kind of legalese with this, but more of a statement as a community about what we value.
Go ahead.
I appreciate that, and just so you know where I'm coming from, I would have a problem with an ordinance because each and every one of us in this room should be treated the same way by law, whether we're a victim or a suspect. So the action should be judged, is what I think. And I'm, I always look for the pitfalls. Where does somebody come back at what we've put in right here? Is it all-inclusive? Is it not all-inclusive? Does it restrict one group, not another group?
I think this pretty well covers all the groups.
Today.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Dallas and Shaun, and then Jesse, sorry.
Thanks for coming down. This one I struggle with a little bit because I don't think, I don't think a resolution that's basically the opinion of these nine folks is what is in order. So I think about an ordinance. But I'm a lawyer, and like many laws that are out there, there's laws that cover everything probably already, and I understand why I believe you would like to have something. And I am, right now, I'm at a point in my mind where I just, I'm not sure what it should be, at least in my own opinion. I think it's safe for me to say that God, and she's a good God, too, that she doesn't want to be discriminatory of any of her people. And I don't either. Now, how do we really send that message out? Because I think most people are, feel the same way, once they get educated on all these subjects. But God, he's a great God, you know, and he's, sometimes I look to him for answers to these kind of matters. So you'll have me up at night thinking about this for some time when we deal with it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, obviously, I think God's pretty great, devoting my life to that vocation. So amen. But interestingly enough, I'm also kind of the not-so-silent partner of a business here in town. And over the summer, we had MTV come here for a whole, for most of a week to look at the pride events that were going on, and they were very impressed at the progress we'd made. And then I was interviewed by The Huff Post, and then they came to town. And in all of these conversations, business kept coming up. Business and people wanting to move here, and for me, it's certainly out of my faith that, yes, I want all people to be treated with dignity and respect, but I also have to admit, I see the benefit to our economy, which is struggling, by making these statements. People look for this kind of thing in communities now. Young families wanting to raise children in a more hospitable environment. Couples moving back to take care of elderly parents. There's that angle on this, too. And having this statement there means more than not.
Shaun.
So this is not an enforceable ordinance? This is just a statement essentially from the city council or from the city saying that we don't tolerate discrimination, right? Because you can't legislate matters, in my opinion. And I also think that the 14th Amendment's pretty clear and provides equal protection to every citizen of this country under the law. I mean, it's in the 14th Amendment, so I would support a resolution. I definitely would not support an ordinance, but I'm okay with the resolution.
Jesse?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, talk along those same lines that Councilman Johnson just mentioned. As we talked during my coffee session back in July, you know, I just, I'm kind of afraid we might not get the right outcome, as you might hope for, in terms of passing a resolution. Spending some time, just a few weeks ago, actually, in North Carolina, the, you know, people were shocked that I was even a councilman, they were shocked that I was elected. They said, "Wow, I didn't even know there were black people in Wyoming," things like that. I said, "Wow, I'm a black person, that's great." So, I mean, that perception's out there, and, you know, you talk to anybody that's from this state or that has moved in this state. You know, we accept each other for who we are. You know, you show up to work on time, you clock in, you clock out, and you're a contributing member of society. That's really all we care about, is how you treat other people, and you're not judged on anything else outside of that. So I think we're already there, but passing this, you know, I'm not sure if that will really show the outside world or people from across the nation that, you know, we're really accepting, you know, that people just don't know and they think of, you know, I guess, everybody's majority white in Wyoming, so that there's no room for anyone else, I guess. There's a lady I met, a council member from Nashville, she wants to come to Wyoming, but then she said, you know, she's afraid of coming to Wyoming, all of her friends say, "Don't go to Wyoming, go to Idaho," and things like that. So I guess it's the perception that we kind of need to change, you know, whether that's how we advertise tourism or something like that, to that effect. But I would support the resolution. I don't see any problem in supporting that resolution. I like the way it's drafted.
Right?
Yeah. I think unfortunately, discrimination is alive in a well, and not only in Wyoming, but across the world, and that's the reality of humankind. And I think that that's something that we face. I know I faced it as a Hispanic multiple times, especially my state legislative race that was sad and hurtful. And so I certainly understand our hope that as a community and as a city council that we can rise above that and that we can see each person with the dignity and respect that they deserve, and also a child of God. And I think that once we embrace those things, certainly life can be a little less complicated. But we know that we're not created that way. A resolution is, I think, is a first step to do that. And I'm very supportive of a resolution for the city to stand and say, "We don't tolerate discrimination in any sense against any human being created in his image." So I find that to be a very powerful statement that we can do. And I say that only because of knowing the pain and the hurt of discrimination and that not very many people have felt that. If they have felt it, they know a dagger that comes. And so standing in solidarity with every human and every person, I think, is very vital and very important. So, thank you for coming and presenting, guys.
Um...
Well, thank you for coming down. I'm not sure where to go with this. I'm a little torn, just like Dallas. I would certainly support some kind of a resolution, but I'm not sure I would support the exact language that's in yours. Just so people understand, I think Casper, Wyoming is probably one of the first people, like 15 or 20 years ago, first group of people that actually had an openly gay mayor. Very nice young man, and did a heck of a nice job for us, before he moved away, before his term was over, I think. He did a good job for us. And I really believe that discrimination of anything other than, there are some things you have to discriminate on. This is what the job pays, this is whatever. But discrimination means to make a decision, but to discriminate on the item that you mentioned in your, on your current proposal, that's reasonable. But I think we need to keep in mind that we need to all live by the golden rule. There's a lot of rules we could get rid of if we all live by the golden rule, and I really would like to push for that, but I will support this resolution in some form, not necessarily in the form that you have it. And I would also say that I belong to an old church, and we recently formed a group that deals with just this issue within our church. And people would have thought that unbelievable 10 years ago, but it's happening now. Thank you.
Okay. That was probably discrimination, I don't know.
Madam Mayor, point of order, are we in discussion or are we still questioning? I'm just making a comment.
I guess you're right.
Can I release them to sit back down and...
Of course, yes.
Okay. Thank you all.
I have seen a lot of resolutions and laws and constitutions and comparative constitutions, and usually the folks that are bothered by something are the best drafters of the constitutional provision or the law or the resolution that they want because they have lived this issue. And, quite frankly, I'd like to see something stronger than a resolution, but I don't know that it's possible. What I'd also like to see is I'd like to have commentary from our citizens. As you know, you may not know this, I'm the only person on the council that hasn't ever been elected. They appointed me. So they all have constituents. I feel I have constituents as well. I'm from Ward 2, and I like hearing from my constituents. And I would really like to have, and the way that, the way that we hear from constituents is if we bring up an ordinance, then the constituents have the right to come down and voice their opinions. And you hear from everybody. And it's always nice when I can hear what my constituents think. And if I don't hear, myself and my little dog, we go take a walk around town and we ask people questions. I was going to do that with the headline of the Star Tribune today and see what everybody thought about that. And I didn't get a chance, I had so much other stuff to do. But I think I think the dignity of human beings is very important. So thanks again for coming down.
Someone else waiting over there?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I will be supporting this resolution, and I appreciate the way that you all presented this. And I think rather than talk about non-discrimination, we should talk about welcoming people to our community. And I've had conversations with many people who tell a story similar to Mr. Johnson's where events brought them to the decision where they needed to come to Wyoming, and they did so with a fair amount of trepidation because we have an image problem. And it is totally at odds with what you hear from people as far as their actual experiences coming here, which are much as Councilman Morgan has described and others, that for the most part, people are very open and accepting in our community, but that's not how we're viewed. And so passing a resolution like this is something that people can look at and say, "Wait a minute, look at this, maybe this place would be okay." And I'm with Councilman Laird. I would personally like to see something stronger than a resolution. It's not legal for a country club to not admit a woman. It's not legal for a restaurant to not serve someone based on the color of their skin. And I don't think it should be legal for someone to be able to discriminate on the basis of gender identity or sexual orientation. That's just me. But that's... And that's not what's in front of us here. What's in front of us here is a statement where we're basically saying, "We want everybody in our community." We will never know about the stories of people who knew about that reputation, who had an opportunity to come to Casper and bring their talents and their capabilities, and they said, "I better not." We'll never know about those people. And... But I'm guessing there's quite a few of them. And this is one small measure we can take to try to change that reputation and basically tell people how we really are, which is what this resolution, in my opinion, says. This is how we really are, not what you've heard about us. So I think it's great that this is finally coming before us. I think it's long overdue, and I appreciate you guys bringing it forward.
Go ahead.
I think that making a resolution like this is a good thing overall for the city of Casper. And like I said, I read real briefly, just as this was starting this evening, a different one I would like to see. And it may be in my email, and I haven't... I'm not connected right now, so I can't see it and give it any thought. I would like to look in that, you know? Like Bob was saying, the golden rule, like, it'd be nice if we could say, "Whereas do unto others as you would have done unto you." Will would probably think I'm quoting the Bible and preaching some kind of line, but so what? And then you'll have some evil individual, so this is what I want done to me, so... Let's look at a couple of options, I would say.
I'll summarize for everybody. So what I hear from council is that generally, there's support in looking at a resolution, possibly support for looking at an ordinance, maybe a little verbiage tweakage. So I think we're going to need to bring it back to a council work session to maybe kind of hammer out what this looks like and how it is really spelled out. And then at that point, when we're satisfied with that document and we make sure that your group is satisfied with that document, then maybe we can prepare it for formal consideration so that we can get the public's feedback as well. Does that encapsulate kind of what you were all trying to accomplish?
Well said, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I did good. Good for you, Carter. Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate it, and thanks for your hard work that you put behind this. And do we need a few minutes for the next group to set up?
Hey, Carter. For both of you.
Did you?
Yeah. There may be a little issue brewing at work. I may have to sneak out. I'm just kind of watching my text messages, but...
Okay.
You might get the... I don't want to go back.
I was thinking of this when we get down to Brookhaven. They've asked us to consider delaying this, the purchase proposal. If I under... Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah. I saw when I was there for Hurricane Katrina, I was in New Orleans. Pretty bad. On... By everybody. I mean, everybody.
And those.
See, that is rejecting our letter.
Confession.
See what I've been saying?
Right.
Who wrote this?
I tune out.
Okay, so do you want me to wait until they... I'll just... Do you want me to just sit? Okay, great.
On this topic before we invite Brookhaven? Okay. Yeah, yeah. So, okay. At this point, we are going to have Councilman Hopkins give us some statement and some guidance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm concerned regarding our next issue, item three on our agenda, because we have a number of people who I have been hearing from over the last couple of days since they saw this agenda published this week. And I'm concerned that we don't have a really good way to allow for their input tonight since none of those people were scheduled to speak at a work session. So what I'm suggesting, after hearing this discussion, I'm suggesting that we ask to table the proposal by DDA to withdraw the properties from any consideration for sale and proceed with that for sale, drawing up the documents. But in addition to that, we schedule when those documents are prepared for council approval that we also have time for discussion by the public to give us a little bit of the other side of the view. Because I'm hearing from a lot of the people, especially the historic folks and people that may be interested in the building downtown to do other things with. In addition to that, there... I just wonder what we're saying to the people in the OYD. Are we saying that small business is no longer welcome? We don't want to give that perception. Also, I'm a little bit worried about how this may affect the outcome of the 1% tax that we've got coming up next year. Are people perceiving that we are going to be putting money into this project, which we can't do by law? It appears that we legally cannot give money to a private enterprise. There are several things regarding the initial study that was done. And I know it's very initial, I know it's not done. But I'm really concerned about not showing any cost for the parking garage. Every one of the three proposals that I think we'll be hearing about tonight have a number somewhere around $70 million attached to them for similar-sized buildings. And when I've done a little research on what parking garages cost, probably the most recent one and the one local, when the state did a Level Two study regarding a proposed parking structure for their proposed office building, that came in at about $7 million. The parking garage, the Spiker Parking Structure in Cheyenne, that was built, I believe, in 2003. That came in at about $9.8 million. And I don't think either one of these numbers includes land cost. Another one that we've got, relatively local, I guess, if you will, we've got Missoula, Montana, that completed a parking garage in 2013. And while I don't have documents from the city on that, they did... The newspaper, the Missoula, did indicate that that was a $10 million cost for that garage, similar size. So I think the idea of putting this land essentially, not off limits, but I think considering something else and getting some other people to talk about it would be helpful to us because I think it's inappropriate for us to put two major draws adjacent to one another. That just limits the amount of infill that you can have between these two properties. Another problem I have with site number one is that the traffic is a real problem. We had studies done several years ago in a conference center, and we were looking at $14 million and roughly $14 million in infrastructure for streets, sewer water, curb and gutter. And that number doesn't show up anywhere in the study so far. I think another thing that comes up is there was never any consideration of this in the comprehensive plan. We worked on this comprehensive plan for well over a year. We had a number of hearings, and I don't think there was any significant mention of a possible conference center on that property. Property acquisition, I've already mentioned that, but I really believe that we've got some issues with our ability to give property away or to give it to any single entity that's a private business. So that would have to be purchased. It can't be given as the initial report I saw. It can't be granted. I don't think that's possible. So with that in mind, I would propose that we listen to what we say tonight, what we have to hear tonight regarding the possible conference center and the study. And we then table that pending an opportunity for some of the other people to give us some input that weren't able to do it tonight. So that's where I stand. Thank you much.
Your point of order, this is only information... We're not being asked to make a decision this evening.
I think they were asked us to delay the decision on selling.
On the ASH, if I'm correct on that. Chris.
Well, I think three and four are tied together, even though they're separated here, information on one and then direction on the other. And they do have a bearing on each other, so... We didn't know this presentation was going to be brought forward prior to the land acquisitions or the, you know, the acceptance of bids on the other one. So what we hear now may have an effect on whether we accept the bids immediately on the next one. And so I think they're tied together, and we just keep that in mind.
Okay. Dallas.
It's confusing for me because I'm the newest council member. But I'm not confused about what our motives and our plans are, which is to do the very best we can to make decisions that impact the citizens of this city. And so I love the presentations. I would have given everybody something the other night if that was our ability. I know how hard the DDA works, and I... And since I've been in government, it... I thought the legal business was slow working, but government is slow. And you've seen it on a national level. Actually, we move with rapid speed here based on the national government. But I just don't know what to do. I know the folks who are here that bid on this property, they did it in good faith. And it appears to me we're going to put this stuff on hold right now. And it hurts my guts to even say this. But it's honestly... It's honestly, I think it's going to happen. And because we can't ignore somebody saying they want to build a hotel and a conference center and all this stuff, and whether it's realistic or not, I don't know. I do believe, though, that for the businesses that have presented themselves, there's a place for them down there, even in the places they're talking about. But it's like cases I've been in where you think you understood what went on, and then you start talking to witnesses and people involved, and all of a sudden, you hear an entirely different scenario that you have to kind of put in the mix master to make a reasonably decent decision. And I don't... For my own self, I apologize for any inconvenience that this has caused people and their dreams and what they want to do with this city. But I have to pay attention to reasonable requests where we haven't made final decisions. And the truth is, the professionals down here, I hold them more accountable than the folks that made presentations here and put themselves on the line. And so when I say, "Hold you accountable," I expect performance and not long, drawn-out, long-winded ideas that may or may not come forth. Because these three people that are here all put on sharp decisions that they have passions about, which makes me think they will succeed. I, for one, I like the old buildings. I like the old buildings. I tried to get in Mr. Manager today down there to see what they had unearthed, but nobody was down there to let me in, so I'll put that off till tomorrow. But I think what I'm telling you is the absolute truth of what's happening. We're not against anybody. We're for everybody. We're for development. We're for doing the right thing, you know? And Bob and Charlie, they have a great deal of knowledge, they've been around here. The mayor who's gone has been here 12 years. I've been here seven months. And I love this city. It's why I got onto this council. And I've lived here all my life. I tend to finish it here. So when I see people walking down the street that I've had to deal with, I want to be able to smile at them and not have them mad at me because they know that I gave them a fair shake. And I think the members of this council will do that. I think they're going to give everybody a fair shake. But when we get all of this massive information, it's like this ordinance. You heard the guy earlier on the cell phone towers. This is an ordinance that even a lawyer struggles to read. And I just got it tonight in printed form, anyway. And I just got it tonight in printed form anyway. So I've got to go read those. I couldn't even ask questions. I loved to ask questions, but I couldn't ask the guy any questions because I really hadn't read the ordinance. So to do a good job for the people of this city, I've got to hear everybody, and I've got to hear what they can actually do, and then hold them accountable to it. So that's where I'm at with it.
So let's move forward and have you do your presentation, Brooke, then.
I was prepared to say Madam Mayor, but Sir Vice Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Brooke Kaufman. I'm the CEO of the Casper Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. I know that you have the memos in your packet, but I'm going to go off my script for a minute and say I appreciate your mindful and well-fought comments tonight. It's nice to know how you feel and what you're thinking. Certainly, our presentation and anything that moves forward with this or doesn't isn't a malicious intent to do something that shouldn't be done in our downtown core. I believe you're elected officials, and you're elected for a reason. It's because those of us who elect you believe that you make good decisions and you know what's best for the city. So it's not us up here saying that you're not doing your job and you're not doing the right thing, and it's certainly nothing against the people who have presented. I was here, they're great presentations. So today really is just about presenting information about where we are. So you have memos that you received in your packet, so I just want to tee this up quickly, and then I'm going to turn it over to the consultants to walk you through how we got here, why we're here, and where we're going. So a couple of things, earlier this year, we were probably around the February timeline, there was interest from the private sector to revisit a potential conference center project in our community. So a group of us got together, my organization, Downtown Development, Forward Casper, Amoco Reuse, and some private parties, and said, let's revisit the 10 years of data that has surrounded this project. So as you know, several studies, lots of communication, many of you have seen the stack in my office of all the information that's gone back and forth for 10 years. And two things came back to us as things that we really wanted to pursue. Number one is a pro forma, like what does it really take to make a project like this pencil in our community? Can it really be done? We all know we're a cyclical market. I can tell you that two or three years ago, our hotel occupancy and our ADR was much higher than it is today. I can tell you, we battled the ups and downs of that. So is something like this even realistic in our community? And number two is, what does the public financing gap look like? And I know that's a lot of your discussions and some concerns, and Bob, you bring up some great points. So how do we close that public financing gap and what's the truth, what's really out there? So everyone in past studies has acknowledged there is a public financing gap. Our group said, how in the world do we close it, right? And that's still in the process that we're in, and unfortunately, that's the piece that's still two weeks out for us. But we're looking for, what are the, here's the private investor, here's the public funds, what really is available to close that gap? Is it new market tax credits? Is it long-term low-interest loans? It's things like that. So those are the things that we're still working through. But let's get to why and what we're doing here tonight. We have the consultants who have done the site analysis work so far. So as you saw in your packets, you're going to see them, they reviewed three sites that have been previously identified. They're going to walk you through the different factors, the financial factors that went into consideration, and the quantitative factors. So with that, I'd like to invite our consultants up. We have Terry Willis, yes, with KTGY. He's with the architectural firm. And then Elliott Kilham is with EPS, and they are a land economics firm. So I'll turn it over, and then there are a few of us here to answer questions when you're done.
Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Terry Willis. I represent the Denver office of KTGY. KTGY is a national firm with offices kind of coast to coast and about 400 architects. And we were engaged to study three potential sites that were offered up as possible locations by working, Casper Hotel Convention Center Working Group for consideration. So our role as architects was to analyze the program, analyze these sites, and see how this program might fit, basically to do a test fit on the site. And in that process, the larger, more interesting part maybe is the actual economic analysis, and which we don't do, but we've engaged EPS also out of Denver, just down the street from our office, to do that analysis. And that's what Elliott Kilham is here to discuss. Let's see. So that's just where we have offices. We are kind of California-centric, but we have about 35 people in the Denver office as KTGY. And Elliott, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Sir Vice Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Elliott Kilham. I'm representing Economic and Planning Systems. We're based in Denver, but we have offices in Oakland, Sacramento, and Los Angeles. We're a real estate economics firm. We have expertise in real estate finance, public finance, economic development, and fiscal analysis, with a specialized focus in public-private partnerships. As Terry and Brooke mentioned, we did the economic piece of this and the financial piece of this, which we'll be talking about after Terry goes through the site analysis.
So I guess these show up. So these are the three sites that we analyzed. One, Site One is a downtown site between David and Ash, just on the south side of David Street Station. Site Two is along the river between First and Old Yellowstone. And Site Three is farther upriver, on a much larger site. This is a blow-up of Site One. You can see that it's bisected by Midwest Avenue, and it's, it is the only real urban site right now. We've analyzed access and utility conditions, how it connects to public transportation, and the street and trail networks, views of it, which show it as an urban site. And I'm just quickly running through here so we have time for discussion about these. The next site, Site Two, is a much larger site, and it spans and includes portions of what was identified as the library site for the county library. And it is a redevelopment area spanning from First to Yellowstone, with a substantial amount of utilities in it. What's lacking on this site is any kind of street and roadwork network, infrastructure. And you can see it's existing, a fairly industrial property. And then Site Three, I wish I could read these, but this is the Joint Powers Board Site. It's a much, much larger site. We quickly realized that this hotel convention center would be, or conference center would be a much smaller footprint than this site. So the big decision is like where on this site would be the best location for this particular facility. And you can see that there's a bentonite plant across the street, which, across the river, which is currently would be a kind of a significant detriment to the site if that's maintained as an operating facility. And you can see kind of the character of the site right now. Parts of the site are really quite beautiful, and the entire site is along the river and has a lot of attributes that, the biggest knock against that site, of course, is the fact of its proximity or lack thereof to downtown. It would not be a walkable site. So we have a program that was given to us. We analyzed briefly at this stage of the game to confirm that, yeah, are the proportions of space and the rough sizes of the spaces appropriate for this facility? And we confirmed that they were. Then we applied that program, which was basically a 200-room hotel and its supporting restaurant and amenities of that, a approximately 55,000-square-foot conference or convention facility that would be attached to that hotel. And then the associated back-of-house to support that facility and the parking on that. So we looked at all three sites and drew a plan for all three sites to make sure that, in fact, this program would fit on. Site One is the tightest of sites, and in fact, would cause the convention or conference facility, portions of it, to actually be two stories in height. The back-of-house functions supporting the hotel, for instance, would happen on multiple floors and not just on the ground floor. The parking, there's 400 cars that we've anticipated would be required to support this facility. Parking on this would be, we've identified as the best location, is across the street from this, not on the same site. To try to fit all that in those 400 cars on a surface lot would not fit, so a portion, a small portion on the south end of the site, we have indicated as a structured parking structure. Just right now, just a two-story parking structure gets us the adequate parking to support this facility. And this one has the added, let's say, benefit of not only connecting to downtown, but really the activation of the David Street Station new construction. This is a diagram of what this facility might look like in a five-story configuration. So it's kind of a five-over-one podium building, five stories of hotel rooms over one story of public functions, public and back-of-house functions. Site Two was, again, a much bigger site than what we needed to fit the program. In this case, the program is all on the surface. We elected to orient the hotel and especially the convention center to take advantage of the proximity of the river and to take advantage of access and views and trails and just the kind of the beautiful environment on the edge of the river and looking up and down the river in both directions. And leaving space on flanking both sides of this hotel and convention facility for future development, be that a library or be that other kind of public or commercial development. There is adequate property for that or for future expansion, either future expansion onto existing parking, and then parking would be structured, or expansion of other facilities. And that's how we were imagining that this hotel would be oriented. In all cases, we're showing basically the exact same hotel footprint and not trying to differentiate that in any of the three cases. Site Three, we considered, as you can see, that this hotel and convention and conference facility would take up less than half of the Joint Powers Board site. And so the big decision here in planning this and plotting this is, okay, where do we put it to take the best advantage of this site? And the thought was, okay, we will put it adjacent to the existing facility, which would allow the balance of the site, where the site is actually, the farther you get away from downtown, it's nicer and could be developed or redeveloped into residential community, senior community perhaps, and farther away from, those future developments would be farther away from the bentonite plant. And there's a 3D view of how that might sit. In this case, we've put the convention, the conference center facing the river, so the pre-function space is what could spill out to the riverfront and the hotel towards the road that comes by. So we'll move on to the economic analysis, Elliott.
Okay, I'm going to move through this pretty quickly, just so we have time for questions. So the focus of tonight is the relative rankings of the site options. We're not going to go into the financial analysis or much into the financial analysis at this point in time, which is still preliminary. To rank the different sites and score the different sites, we looked at two different factors, financial factors and location factors. Financial factors, we looked at the development program as it relates to development cost. And for location factors, we looked at conference attractiveness, catalytic impact, walkability, ease of assembly, and economic impact. And that's how we came up with our preliminary recommendation. Before I go into details, I just want to go over some key findings to help you give some idea of the kind of relative importance of the different factors. For financial factors, the sites aren't greatly differentiated by the financial factors. They have similar total development costs and similar cash flow or revenue estimates. Location factors became a bigger differentiator between the different sites and, in our opinion, should hold more weight in how we're ranking or scoring the different sites. If I was to sum up a lot of our analysis in a sentence, downtown location became a really important consideration for locating the hotel and conference center, and you'll see that in the rankings. Site One, reranked one. Site Two, reranked two. And Site Three, reranked three. Now moving to some of the more detailed analysis for financial factors, I just wanted to show again the development program and emphasize a number of points. The program itself is almost identical in terms of the building, same square footage of a hotel, same square footage or pretty close to similar square footages for conference centers. This results in similar building or construction costs, and it also results in similar cash flow estimates or net operating income for the hotel. The key differentiators were in total development costs, and specifically, its structured parking and land area. Land area affected the site preparation costs and the total development cost estimate, and also impacted the land acquisition fee. Now, you'll see throughout our presentation that we'll refer to land donation or land donation is possible. We realize that that's not a settled issue in any way, and that that becomes more of a question of the public or gap financing and the deal structure. It's something that we consider, and we touch on lightly here, just because it differentiated the different sites. Moving to a detailed analysis of total development costs, again, similar to what I said in the last slide, the key differentiators were land acquisition and site preparation, and then structured parking, and those are highlighted in red. And to give you some sense of how they differentiated, for Site One, structured parking would be required to fit the parking program. Parking costs $4.5 million on that site, or that's our estimate. For the other sites, it costs about $500,000 or $560,000. And then land acquisition, if land, if you have to pay for land for Site Three, for example, it's $7 million compared to about $5 million for Site One. So quickly summarizing the financial factors, similar total development costs. Site One reranked as the third, as it requires structured parking. Site Three has higher total development costs, but does not require structured parking and has the potential for a land donation from the Joint Powers Board. Turning now to the different location factors, so for conference attractiveness, we considered how attractive the site would be to meeting and conference organizers in the state of Wyoming. Strategic Advisory Group, or SAG, produced a report in 2012. That was a conference center market study. There are hotels, there are consultants specializing in hotels. They strongly recommended a downtown site, and as part of their analysis, they did a survey of meeting and hotel planners in the state of Wyoming, and they stated a preference for a downtown location for hotel and conference center. We also took in consideration the river as a premium for the different sites. As a result, we ranked Site One as high, its central location right in downtown. Site Two, which is downtown-adjacent and has that premium riverfront location, is high. And then Site Three as a medium, given its riverfront location. Catalytic impact, we consider the impact that the investment of the site would have on future development around the site. And here, we really focused on how the investment would build on existing development momentum in Casper, and we thought a lot about how it would build on momentum in the downtown, including investments that the city's making like David Street Station. We also took into consideration the availability of land on which future development could take place, which really benefited the scorings for Site Two and Site Three. And as a result, you can see our rankings. Site One, we ranked as high or scored as high. Site Two, we scored as medium. And Site Three, we scored as medium. Walkability considers the proximity to downtown, or really the proximity to origins and destinations, and how easily accessible the site is to other origins and destinations like businesses, retail, restaurants in Casper, and the existence of pedestrian infrastructure. We found through our work in a number We found through our work in a number of states that walkability has become an increasingly important factor for tenants and their location selection, and as a result, is an increasingly important factor for brokers and developers. And walkability has, we've seen a premium for more walkable buildings in our interviews and studies. Site one, we ranked as high, it has an existing pedestrian infrastructure and is really close to other businesses and amenities downtown. Site two has some pedestrian infrastructure leading to it, but it's spotty in cases and it's a little farther away from downtown and other amenities and businesses. And site three does not have pedestrian infrastructure, and it's about a 36-minute walk from downtown. We ranked as low. Ease of assembly just considers how easy the site would be to assemble, how many owners it has, whether the owners are public or private, and whether there are existing uses on the site. And site two has private owners, but these owners have indicated a willingness to partner and work with the project. Site one and site two have two owners, they have some existing buildings, so we ranked them as a medium. And then site three has one owner, it's owned by the Joint Powers Board or the Amoco Reuse Joint Powers Board, we ranked as high. And for the final location factor, we looked at economic impacts, which considers how the hotel and conference center might increase spending throughout Casper. And we really thought about how bringing foot traffic to the downtown might contribute to spending in the downtown and to other businesses in the downtown. Site one, we ranked as high, again, given its central proximity. Site two, downtown adjacent, we ranked as medium, and then site three, we ranked as low. It's not close to many existing businesses and retail or restaurant establishments in So just to summarize, site one scored high in five of the six factors, and we ranked it as the highest for location factors. Site two, we ranked, is a second-ranked location, and then site three is the third-ranked location. So as we were doing our final ranking, we put the two financial factors and location factors together in a matrix, and we compared them, and we concluded that site one has the best combination of financial and location factors. Site two, again, has similar location factors, similar financial factors, but somewhat less appealing location factors. And then site three, we ranked as the third, similar total development costs, but a more isolated site and would contribute less to some synergistic development in the area. So that was how we structured our analysis. Now I think we have time to do questions, both Terry and I.
Questions?
This would...
Yeah, go ahead.
This presupposes that all of the old buildings be torn down.
Yes.
I mean, there is...
Yeah.
Charlie.
I hope you're comfortable with this question.
Sure.
We're obviously in a political situation with competing interests and competing agendas. It's been suggested that your company was contracted to... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Did it again. That your company was contracted to perform this study by individuals who had a vested interest in a certain outcome, and that you may have in fact even been given some instructions prior to conducting the survey as to how it should come out. Would you care to comment on that?
We were given no instructions on how the study would come out. It's our independent analysis of what would be the best site for a hotel and conference center. Thank you.
Comments? Chris?
With this presentation, have you completed the work you need? My impression is that you have not, that you're still looking at additional financing or what you're referring to as the gap, is that right?
Right, we're still doing, we're still refining our financial analysis, and we're going to come up with an answer on whether this project is feasible or not, how much gap financing it needs, and if there is available gap financing to cover that, or financing to cover that gap. I'd say in terms of location factors, we've ranked the different sites, and this is our belief in what the best location is. I think one of the elements that comes into this is how important is the gap financing and kind of additional dollars. So it may be that some sites have more available financing, which would look more favorably in later analysis.
When do you expect to have that information?
I think Brooke mentioned two weeks, which I think seems something that we can shoot for, so about two weeks from now.
Right. I'd love to say tomorrow, but two weeks.
Are you confident with two weeks?
Yes, I think that's a goal we can work towards.
Thank you. Sean?
Do you have a timeframe for when you would see construction of something like this? I mean, because we have businesses that have financing already in place, they are ready to go yesterday. We've been talking about a conference center since 2012, so is there like a timeframe that you would like to see construction on something like this?
Go ahead, Brooke.
I don't mean to be disrespectful and sit there, so right now, tentatively 2021.
Dallas and then Chris.
I have a couple of questions. You saying it wouldn't start construction until 2021? Completed. So if we said, look, we want you to give us an absolute proposal on this, just like these other people did, that you're bound by it and that we'd be bound by it, when could you do that?
There's still a couple of things in play for us on that gap financing piece, and one of the things that is on our mind, too, is the parking study that you guys have commissioned. I think the results of that are coming back in around March. There's also some demand analysis that my organization would like to do around this, so I think it's reasonable to say March. I know that feels like forever, but it's a huge project for us.
So, just so I know how to hold people to their accountability, so am I hearing what you say is that you can't give us a proposal that we could vote on until March of 2018?
And Brandon, I may have to...
Be comfortable here, because I just want to hear something.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, it would be through March. That gap financing would have, obviously, the public component that would need to be vetted, the new market tax credit option that we're pursuing, low-interest loans through the state, we would also have to go in front of the slipboard potentially for site one, we would also have to go potentially to the Wyoming Business Council for any sort of public financing from the state. Those types of decisions, as you know, in your experience with government, don't happen overnight. And so working through the next three and a half months essentially and the timing of the legislature would provide the due diligence to seek those types of public financing opportunities.
So if you don't do it by March of 2018, it's fair then if we decide, said you didn't get her done and these folks want to buy something and we still are even interested that we don't have to worry about you guys coming with more plans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chris?
My question was unanswered, thank you.
No, it wasn't. Bob?
Thank you. A couple of questions regarding, I guess, the catalytic impact and the economic impact. Site two is medium on both cases as opposed to site one, which was high. It looks to me, and maybe I'm not understanding what catalytic impact is versus economic impact, but the fact is that site two has a lot more open land area around it than site one, therefore that would seem reasonable in the sense this land is essentially developable land, that in both cases, site two would rank just as high as site one because it is relatively restricted around it right now. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, I think it's a reasonable argument. I think the way we were looking at it is site one is very centrally located in close proximity to have existing development momentum going on right now, and that's what we considered as the more important factor that it would drive development going around in its area. But I think the argument that you make is a reasonable argument, there's base around site one, and it can be built on it. So we just put more emphasis on being close to downtown.
Any other discussion, questions? Thank you, appreciate that. Bob, would you repeat what you, just for my clarification, because we did a switch, and I'm going to just make clarification, the mayor had to leave, she had an emergency at work that she had to tend to, so she had to leave, so she sends her apology. So I just got through the switch through, I just needed to hear that one more time, Bob.
Thank you. What I proposed early on is that the fact is that we have not heard from anybody in opposition to this proposal. And literally from the email and phone calls I've been getting over the last three days since this was published, there's a lot of people out there that would like to talk about it. So what I'm proposing tonight, instead of doing a thumbs up or thumbs down on the request to hold off on doing anything with the other two pieces of property that we've actually taken bids on, I'm suggesting we table this until such time as if we move forward, when we get to item number four, if we move forward with requesting the city to put together packages to sell those two properties, that before that discussion is held, that we have a public meeting to allow some of the other people to tell us, give us some of their input regarding this proposal and in fact every other proposal.
Okay. Is there a discussion on his... Chris, go ahead.
Well, I think that a two-week... These are intermixed, so they, I speak of them both at the same time. A two-week hold on that until we see the financing model that the conference center brings, but my concern is, I believe that we're obligated under the bids to open within a certain amount of time, correct?
Yes, for clarification, Councilman Walsh, was that you were, as far as whether we're obligated to accept or reject the bids on the other property, basically what's under 151112, you have to either accept the highest bid or reject them entirely on any bid you've gotten on the property. I'm going to defer to the manager or of Community Developments here as to how long those bids. I think there was, they had to be held open for a certain amount of time. I want to say 60 days, but I'm going on a rough recollection there, and perhaps the city manager might have a more accurate number.
Isn't there an expiration time if it's not acted upon, that there's an expiration time, I believe?
I don't see anything statutorily that says they must be acted on with a certain time. I think the requirement in the bid was to be, that they had to be valid or held open for a certain amount of time, and that's what I believe the Community Development Department can answer more accurately, and that's what I'm, my memory is 60 days, but I may not be 100% on that.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, member of the council, the actual life of the bid is 30 days, both submitted, and so council's up against a bit of a timeline with regard to making a decision to either accept or reject, as City Attorney described.
So if we waited two weeks, then we would be, 30 days would have expired by then? Or no?
Well, but I think the question is, what does the law say if there's no action taken?
Yeah.
I think it expires, is what I think. But I, you know, I'm not, unless somebody throws a statute and points it out to me, I think it expires. I don't think we're required to do anything. I think that if we do nothing, it expires, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows accurately what these options are.
And you're correct, Councilman, ultimately, if no bid was accepted, it would in effect be rejected and expire, the options are, yeah, to accept the high one or reject, so not accepting them within the timeframe that they were to be held open would in effect be a rejection of all.
I would, I prefer the word expiration myself, but I think that's, we're saying the same thing.
Charlie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Johnson talked about the conference center dating back to 2012. I think it goes back about 2007, maybe earlier. And when I first joined council, we had a list of strategic goals, and the number one goal was a conference center. And there were good reasons for that, because of the studies that had been done about the economic impact that a conference center would have on our community. Now, whether it should be built downtown or on the, what's called the library site, or even out at the golf course, I think is the debate and the question that we have. But the stakes for this are very high, and we have had a number of very frustrating experiences happen as we have gone through this herky-jerky, gone down this herky-jerky path of trying to get a conference center in our community. People keep talking about the need to diversify our economy, this would be one small step in that direction. So I think, I think the stakes are high enough that we need to have some patience and let some of these things play out. That doesn't necessarily mean that a conference center gets built and the old buildings get tore down. It just means we need to be sure that we do everything we can to maximize the likelihood that a conference center actually gets built somewhere in this community because of the economic impact that it will have. And so I feel like we've done these good folks disservice in a way unintentionally by going through this entire process and then having this stuff, this information come forward to us, where we're talking about a $70 million investment in our community, and I just want to make sure that we don't take any actions that reduce the likelihood that that investment occurs and that a conference center gets built. And so we've been talking about this for many, many years, and if we have to go through a bidding process again, that's unfortunate. I realize it's unfair to some of the folks that have put a lot of effort into this and have their hopes pinned on doing this. It doesn't mean those things won't happen, but it just means we have to do due diligence, and as Councilman Laird said in his opening remarks, we have to do what's best for this entire community over the long term, because what happens with this decision will affect this community for the next 50 years. So I think we should be patient.
This might be my fault as much as anybody. Are we in the number four direction requested? I mean, we're certainly discussing that, so...
Yeah, we're discussing, I think, with your kind of...
Liz have something for us?
Yeah. Sean has a comment, then we can move forward. Go ahead, Sean.
I am for selling the properties in question downtown. I think site two is, the differences in one and two are minuscule, in my opinion. I'm not totally convinced the conference center is going to happen because we've been talking about it for more than a decade. I think we need to move forward with letting private business develop that area downtown and immediately get it on the tax rolls and get them moving, and then the other sides. I think, I mean, I think waiting on all of this for the downtown side, I just don't, I don't agree with that. I think we need to move forward with, with selling it.
Thanks. So, Carter, we can bring Liz up? We move to number four?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, there's been some conversation with regard to removing the item for all intents and purposes...
Oh, okay.
And moving it to another date. There's been a lot of conversation with respect to making that happen in conjunction with a public hearing. And so with regard to what the intent of the item for tonight was, it was anticipated that if the direction were ready, that indeed direction could be given pertaining to the bids that have been opened by the council and have been submitted and reviewed and those kinds of things. So I guess the question that I don't understand the direction for one way or the other is with regard to whether or not council wants to, to put in Councilman Hopkins's words, table this item with regard to another discussion and another work session, or if indeed council is prepared to make a direction happen this evening, particularly given the timeframe we are considering in regards to the life of the bids, if it is.
So I guess to move forward, do we have enough support for... So I guess to move forward, do we have enough support for Bob's position to table Item Number Four until further, to have public hearings and so forth? Is there support for that?
I would call it a continuance.
Continuance?
I think that's all we're saying, is we want to continue this matter for, subject to my brain processing this information, Mr. Manager. I tend to agree with Sean, but I, I've got to, I've got to process the information. And I, so lawyers, whenever they are in a bind, they ask for a continuance. So that's what I think would be appropriate here, even though it's painful to some people. But I think that in the larger scope of things, we need to continue this matter and become more educated with it.
Chris.
Could we continue this to a date certain? Could we? I don't want to see these people to put businesses, business proposals together to have to redo that. They're good proposals. The problem was, we were lacking the information that there was a conference center proposal that was just about to jump over the edge to be presented to us. We did not have that piece of the puzzle. That's not, that's not a problem that we created. We didn't know it was going to happen. I don't want to aggravate these people that went to all the hard work, that followed the, all the steps that they needed and put together proposals, just like Sean was saying. You know, it's a wave of probability against a no. They could go right now. Conference center sounds good to me. And I've spoken with Brooke and the DDA, and the idea, the concept is great. I'm not in support of funding that in any way, but they, that's what they're working on. But to give them two weeks, we trigger a problem with the other folks. And then we trigger a problem where more bids are going to come in because we're going to have to reopen it, correct? So the ones that met the timelines as required, did everything right, could get the situation because we didn't know about the conference center. This is, this is a problem. Because I'll tell you what, if we make them rebid, everybody knows what their bids are. And we might as well be Tammany Hall. How do we correct that problem?
We continue it.
No, you sell it and then they can look at the other side options.
You may be exactly right.
Okay, so I've got, I've got Bob, Jesse, and then Charlie.
I guess my question is for staff. Could we counsel, or could we as a council request a public hearing from the other side of the issue regarding those historic buildings downtown before we have to act in council to accept those bids?
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman, absolutely. I think that's within your purview.
Thank you.
Jesse.
Thank you, Vice. I just wanted to talk about, I guess, both items now that we're on Number Four. You know, we're in a tough position. We see the appraised value as it stands now and then the bid amount that we've received, but what we don't see, we don't see the amount that the city paid. We spent $3 million in that area. We're essentially getting rid of half of that. So if you think about it, this one and a half million dollars, we're going to receive possibly 800,000 of that. So if you look at it, you know, we've already had this discussion when we're trying to sell other property around town. You know, we have a big issue trying to sell property. And, you know, this isn't, the people that have brought forth a proposal, it's not their fault, but it's the city's fault for buying something over an appraised value. And then now we're trying to sell it all of a sudden. When we originally bought it, the person that was selling it didn't want to parcel it out. And then we've essentially done that and parceled it out. So I don't know why, excuse me, I'm supposed to go soon. But, so I, you know, council is just in a tough spot in general. A conference center would be outstanding. As Councilman Powell mentioned, the economic factors of how we'd benefit just from property taxes alone would be incredible. And to see that property actually develop is important. And the implications of the decision that we make 20 years from now, is that the right decision? You have to look at, this is city-owned property. What are our choices to fill a need for our community? If you look at downtown, what's a need downtown? Parking is certainly one of those. Housing is certainly one of those. And to further that infrastructure and development, you know, you have, at that point, if you do have maybe a mixed use of apartment and hotel and possibly a convention center, then you could possibly have a public-private partnership for a parking garage. We just heard how expensive parking garages are, and that's certainly a need, especially when you have the uncertainty around the state-owned property that are downtown. So there's a lot of options that we have to consider. It's kind of a mess, to be honest. And I really don't want to let a small business down, but at the same time, you know, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers who have bought this $3 million property. We have historic buildings under one of them and other ones that are already exposed. And we have to think about, you know, how does that play a factor or at all? You know, if you think of the city of Casper, do I think of, you know, the old tire building or auto shop that's under planes? You know, I don't think so. So ripping that out, yeah, it hurts, but at the same time, is that the staple for downtown Casper, you know? So those are questions that we're grappling with, and that's something that I'm certainly trying to work out. So I'm comfortable with it. But right now, if we have an option for a $70 million investment, which is unheard of, and the fact that we're even in this position now is incredible. So I'd like to give that a shot, just to see if that's even possible. You know, some of the proposals that we've seen, they're expanding business. It's something that's actually outside of oil and gas. And I really like that because that is one step closer towards diversifying our economy. You know, is it the next North Face? Who knows? I don't know. But it would be great to see them expand and continue to do what they're doing. So I support small businesses and, you know, a lot of people are saying, you know, not allowing that, we're all of a sudden not supporting small businesses. You know, I think we are. There's just a lot of options that we have to consider.
Charlie, and then Chris, and then Sean.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, in the short time I've been on council, I think there have been four separate conference center proposals that have gone down in flames. And this one may too. The problem with moving forward with the sale, and I realize we are not acting really in good faith, given the circumstances, but if we do go forward with the sale as we said we would, we take Site One off the table. And whether I think Site One or Site Two or Site Three is the best site doesn't really matter. What matters is that we have a private investor who's probably watching this discussion right now and trying to decide, do I want to do this in Casper, Wyoming? And if that person or group decides that Site One is the best location or the only location that they are willing to invest in, and we take it off the table, the conference center doesn't happen. And so that's why I say we need to be patient. I agree with Councilman Hopkins that we should have a full public discussion of this because it impacts everyone in this community and will impact the community for years to come. But I think to sell the properties now would be unwise and, and basically take something off the table that could end up being very valuable for us.
Good, Chris.
Prior to making a vote on that, it needs to be absolutely clear what we're doing. If we hold a public meeting, which I agree with, and I agree with Jesse's statement, and we needed a greater, more in-depth look at this, we hold a public meeting, the bids expire, correct?
They do.
So that means when those are rebid, and they won't be offered exclusively to the same people again. Now, you tell me, what is the charge that's going to be leveled at us for bid fixing? And how can you say that we aren't?
We're not going to do that. Can't do that.
How do we not when we, when we know that this is coming up and when it goes back out, everybody knows what these people bid?
We're not going to do anything illegal. It's perfectly legal what these guys are all talking about. When they drafted these statutes, everyone knew that things change rapidly in a city. New projects come forth. That's why they put short fuses on these bids. And it's a public, the public has knowledge that these bids are very short and that the city council can, can, can grant them or do nothing with them, which means they expire. And unfortunately, in this kind of an economy and with the kind of activity that's going on in Casper, we don't have much control over timing with what people want to do. What we have to do, I think, is make a decision as to whether it is worthwhile to listen to what they're proposing and see if they make a proposal. And if not, it's over. And yes, that, under the law, they would have to rebid the properties, and everybody would be entitled to do that. That's unfortunately the game of business. There's no, there's no guarantees, as they know, that their bid would have been accepted even had we gone forward tonight. So the part that, I'm like you, Chris, the part that bothers me is that our dominoes wasn't in the order that they have become to be in now. But it's nobody's fault. But we are the nine people that have to deal with it. So what is the best decision we can make that's fair, not just to three people, but fair to the entire community? That's where, that's where I believe my mind is. So I got, you know, that's why I get my 600 a month, to make hard decisions, you know?
Perhaps I misunderstood. I thought we could arrange a public hearing for the opposite side of this before we have to decide on accepting those bids. We're just deciding tonight to give council or give staff direction to prepare the documents to sell. We still have to approve it.
The only thing that, Bob, that always comes up in my world is, this time of year, it's very difficult to get these kind of things done with everything that goes on this time of year.
But we can hold a public hearing.
And to have a public hearing, you have to put out a notice and somehow get people down here. It's really a non-hearing.
Okay, let's take a couple more comments and then we need to move forward, I think. Sean.
I'm for a conference center. I think it's a great idea. I don't doubt that these folks are trying their best to do it. But again, it's an uncertainty. Like Charlie said, there's already been four plans that have crashed. This has been going on for over a decade. We know for a fact that 1890 and Ashby Construction and everybody else that gave us a proposal, we know they're ready to put something there. We know that for a fact. We don't know for a fact that a conference center is going to happen. So we just, we just sit on this piece of land until 2020 and think in case a conference center happens, I mean, I just, I think we need to move forward with, with selling this land. I really do.
Okay, so I think what we need, I've got a couple things. I've got Bob's proposal of tabling this issue and holding a public hearing. So I think we need to see if we can get a thumbs up, if we can, if there's any room to support Bob's proposal. Chris.
Where we at?
You were a thumbs up. Okay.
So where we at?
So.
We're going to do a public hearing.
Public hearing. Does that give you, do you understand that, Carter?
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, are we saying a public hearing in two weeks consistent with a proposed timeline earlier or a different date that council would like to see?
What do you guys think?
Timeline's expired on these people's bids.
Yep.
I would like to hold a public hearing before the timeline expires.
Why do we need a public hearing? This is our job as city council members to make these decisions. What do we need a?
When does the official bid expire? The 14th of December?
And there's no policy of extending the bid time, Mr. City Attorney?
I would have to defer to Community Development on what they've done in prior property sales.
You what?
I'd have to ask Liz, Community Development, what she's done in prior property sales. I'm not aware of any policy. And I'm also not aware that it's not a policy. So I'd ask you to have Liz chip in on that one, please.
So this is all new? Okay.
We don't know whether it's legal or not. And I don't know the answer to that question, as I said here. However, if it, if there's a legality to it, I would, I would want to see their bids continued until the DDA presents their information. That would be the best possible thing we could do if it's legal. And I don't know that it's legal. If they just expire by statute, they expire by statute.
But we have two Tuesdays. We've got the 5th and the 12th. We can certainly hold a special council meeting to have a public hearing.
Before the 14th.
Because they expire on the 14th.
Well, the way I understand it, Councilman Hopkins, is that they are requesting till March to make their proposal. There's a part of me that says a quick public hearing won't be that effective anyway. So.
I think our city manager has something for us. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor Protam, my comment was actually more along the lines of what Councilman Hopkins just said. Given that the bids do not expire until December 14th, that is a two-week allowance, if you will, to hold a public hearing if council chooses to do so and hear information further, particularly from the group that presented this evening, should that be available and still be within the timeframe allocated by the request for proposals.
So looking at the dates, before the 14th, we have the rest of this week, obviously, which may be out to give enough time out. But we have the week of the 4th and then the 11th up till the 14th, if we wanted to hold a public hearing. Chris.
But wouldn't we just, I would recommend we hold a public hearing on the 12th on our regular work session day.
Perfect, yep. Is that something?
Absolutely. You bet.
Would everybody be okay with that?
Just a question.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I have that in front of me. Mr. Mayor Protam, is there anything other, other agenda items on the 12th that are essential that we need to be sure to have time for? Because we really should make this front and center.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilman Powell, the answer is yes. There are other pretty critical items. One in particular is with regard to a conversation near and dear to some individuals' heart with regard to CADA. We also have a couple other items that could possibly be postponed. But I would suggest that this agenda is flexible enough that we could certainly include a public hearing.
I think if it's flexible enough and the council feels comfortable with that and we can move around a few things, then, Carter, I say we do that then.
Let's do it.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Jesse.
Are you out of here?
Carter, do we want to move into the back or should we just?
Up to you guys, whatever you'd like to do.
Do you guys want to stay in or do you guys want to go to the back? Stay here. Okay.
So Charlie, do we have to hear the wham thing tonight? Mr. Casey drove up from Cheyenne.
Maybe I oughta have him get on Report for Wyoming.
We're gonna talk about that.
Well, I wanna hear what Mr. Kason has to say. I can't hear you.
We're not gonna get anywhere.
Well, the, the truth is, we can, we can also schedule my, my, some, but I think we may do that. I haven't had this much emails since, I've had a council.
Oh, yeah, I've got a lot of them, but those, even in his group, haven't sent us email either. But all it's gonna do is that we're gonna end up having to have a vote on the bids.
That's fine. But, but we have not heard anything from the other side.
And that, now that I think about it, that might have been the best thing, is just to have a vote on the bids. One of the reasons you have a public hearing is so people have a chance to have.
One of the tough issues is that this property was never even considered in any of the other three or four proposals for a site or a conference center.
Which, which property?
Plain property.
Of course it was. That was the original proposal in 2012. It was all the plain site. H.I.P., yeah. No, Bob, it was the entire block. Here's, here's what's gonna happen. It was yellow, it was yellow.
But we didn't know that.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get the wet, we're gonna get the wetzel crowd down.
All right, upright. Thank you.
This is the first time that this guy decided to sell it to the city and we bought it with opportunity first.
The reason he came to us, Bob, is because we approached him with the first go-around in 2012. That's why he came to us and said, you still want it?
And we did.
And we did, but no, this was part of the original conference center proposal.
But, but I'm still saying, it does not mean a conference center won't happen. It just means it may not be in the middle of that block.
Well, I'm, my argument, you remember what I said? I don't know who this person is or this group is.
It's pretty secret and this sounds familiar.
If they bill because we take it off the table, we're screwed.
I tell you what would happen if, if whoever it is would come in and say, we'll do it. Here's my checkbook. But that's not gonna happen.
Well, we're gonna be closer to that in two weeks.
Well, maybe, yeah. We're gonna have to do one heck of a proposal to get everybody back in here.
Absolutely, she does. Put us in jeopardy. She's in a position, plus downstairs. This was on the way.
Cut, why you cut, man?
I don't know, I just got very crazy.
Or someone the other way.
Is this, is this being televised?
It gets harder in the world, especially not getting a whole...
Room?
Work sessions are usually, right, their sessions are. I was thinking that they were all on one night.
Are you giving up on this?
I am.
You're the first one to give up.
Good, how are you?
Wait for one more, Mr. Kason.
We're fine, we're fine.
Put Sunday in the chair.
Come on, man.
When I saw your Facebook, your picture was in the paper, I thought, thank you, Star Tribune. Yes, so my pleasure meeting you in person.
All right.
Mr. Kason, thank you for being patient with us.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the council. My name is Rick Kason. I do serve. I've, I've already been spoken at, so. I appreciate, uh, the time that you're gonna allow me to, to spend this evening. Looking at the schedule, I should have concluded about five minutes ago, so I will do my best to allow, uh, the, the information I'd like to share with you this evening, and I appreciate the time that you've allowed for this. Uh, it was mentioned earlier that I drove up from, from Cheyenne to be with you this evening. Actually, my day started in Thermopolis at a joint transportation committee meeting, but so be it. So what I'd like to do is, is share with you, as the, the cover slide shows, just a WHAM overview, uh, where we stand today and make sure that, uh, we have a conversation. And even though I have a presentation this evening, my intention is to have a conversation. So again, if there are questions as we go through the materials, please ask them at that, that point in time, so let's not wait. So this evening, and again, I, I apparently drew a lot of, uh, audience, cause everybody left, but, uh, this is what I'd like to talk about today, this evening. Who is WHAM? Touch base on a strategic plan that we've just were, have been working on since last April. Talk a little bit about the municipal finance report, volume two, which then absolutely goes into the 2018 legislative session agenda, uh, which we're gonna spend a little bit of time on that this evening. And Mr. Mayor Protam, if I seem to, if you wanna move me on, just move me on, we'll make this work.
Thank you.
This is your time. So I'm not sure how much you all know about WHAM, what we do, who we are, but we work for you and the other 98 municipalities, incorporated municipalities in, in the state of Wyoming. Our mission, very simple, to advocate for cities and towns and their common interests as well as educational opportunities. And when we talk about advocacy, that really is a fancy word for lobbying, working with legislators and other folks and trying to make and give influen, influential information, correct information and accurate information. The reason I, I talk about the 99 municipalities in Wyoming, as you are probably aware, very diverse, from the lowest populated municipality at four to the largest of 63,000-plus people. Even though there's a lot of diversity in there, there's also some common interests, needs that are the same and different at the same time. So again, from four to 63-plus thousand people, it's a lot of diversity in there, and that's very important to remember. Here's just a, a quick slide on the organizational structure of WHAM. Right there at the top, cities and towns, that's our bosses. You are the boss for, for our association. We do have a board of directors that's created, um, by regional directors. And we're gonna see the, a map on the regions. We are created in six different regions. We have three directors from each region, one from the city, one from a, a smaller town, and then one from, uh, that is at large as well. We also have representatives from what we call WHAMCAT, which is the Wyoming Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers, GOSMA, which is a organization for, uh, managers and administrators on a regional basis. We'll touch a little bit on that. Leadership Training Services, we also is part of our component. And then as we go down, you see the, the breakup of our regions, and Casper area is in region number four. And again, that's just by design. Yes, sir?
Don't mean to interrupt you, but I would really like to know what you think are the most serious issues facing municipalities with respect to their relationship right now with the legislature?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I kinda understand. I think everybody kinda understands all the stuff you're flashing up there. So I'm asking you to cut to the chase just for me, because I am concerned about what's going on with, with, with the legislature and the municipalities. And then, of course, I, just so you know, I have an issue myself, because we're one of the biggest towns in Wyoming. I think we have different issues that I don't think are being addressed with the legislature through, um, through, uh, someone we could hire that could go down and speak to the legislature. So if you can tell me what our main, our main concerns are gonna be that affects all of us in Wyoming.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I can either jump to that, the purpose of this other information is to lead into that legislative discussion.
Why don't you go ahead and finish and then lead into?
And I'll, I'm gonna try to do it at warps.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Kason.
Also important, because you are a strong supporter. Casper's been a strong supporter of WHAM for a good number of years, just not with dollars, but with people and timing and everything else. I think you oughta know a little bit about what the investment that you are making in, and the results of that as well. So, uh, Mr. Councilman, if, I'm, I'm gonna get to that, but I wanna, I wanna build into that if that's all right, sir. Okay. So again, this to give you an idea of what our organizational structure is, and I'm gonna touch base very briefly on many of these. Okay. I mentioned that we advocate. So in essence, and, and to the question, WHAM is the voice for those 99 municipalities. And that, that voice reaches out not only to the legislative members, but that reach out, reaches out to the five state elected officials as well. It also works, reaches out to our congressional delegation when there is something on the national level that is of importance. And so we have that ability and we have that networking that's going on right now. We represent the cities and towns, again, through the legislative process, interim meetings process throughout the year, uh, the National League of Conference, or National League of Cities, excuse me. We're just as, as Councilman Morgan was just, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, out in Charlotte, North Carolina. So we're there at the national picture as well. We also work with other associations throughout the state, like the Wyoming Economic Development Association, the County Commissioners Association, the Wyoming Liquor Association, again, because we all know liquor licenses are kind of gold around this place. We also work with the tourism industry as well, just for a few examples. We're an informational resource. That's part of the, the purpose here tonight, to, to provide you information, to give you some educational information as well. On occasion, we, in 2000, 2017 seemed to be a very active years, when we're trying to get information, we will reach out to the municipalities. We may have a ca, a, a request from a legislator, the governor's office, about getting information from municipalities. We may not have that information at our hand, and we do not want to make suppositions. So we will reach out to managers, administrators, clerks and treasurers, elected officials to gather that information, could be on best practices. So again, we serve as a resource there. We offer leadership development programs and educational opportunities as well for elected, elected officials as well as staff members. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, member-driven organization. Uh, we've been around, uh, incorporated for 50 years, but WHAM was even active before it incorporated in 1967. But two key words there is nonprofit and nonpartisan. Excuse me. I mentioned, uh, the regional basis as well, and this will lead a little bit to the question earlier about reaching out to legislators and everything else. We're broken down in six different regions. We have a balance between big cities, small towns, and population as well. As you can see, the regions board's representation is on the screen, and as you can also see on the slide, Councilman Powell and, uh, City Manager Napier are part of the Board of Directors for the WHAM organization representing your region. Excuse me. I mentioned earlier about the, the strong support and, and people involved and everything else. And just last week at the Joint Corporations Committee, you had three people, you had three folks to come up, uh, we were in Sundance last week, okay? Talking about extraterritorial jurisdiction, talking about the surface water drainage bill and everything else. The importance of, of commenting that is you sent up people with expertise. Their testimony and their presence was valuable. So again, that is not taken lightly. We have two standing, ongoing committees besides the Board of Directors. Executive Committee, again, as you'll see, Mr. Napier sits on that as well. That executive committee meets as needed in between board meetings if there is an issue that we have to address. It could be on a timing issue, it could be a contract. But again, the executive committee is an extension of the Board of Directors. The Legislative Leadership Committee, of which Councilman Powell serves on, very, very active committee. As you will see there, it also is representative of the regions. We get that statewide flavor, if I may. This committee meets weekly, at least weekly during the legislative sessions, and at least monthly during the non-legislative sessions to follow bills, to give guidance, to give input. What have, what have you heard in Casper that we have not heard in Cheyenne or in Gillette or in Rock Springs or wherever? But again, they, these are the eyes and the ears and the expertise that we need to know. Leadership Training Services, very, very briefly, offers educational and training services to elected officials as well as staff members in our municipalities. Again, the Great Open Spaces City Management Association, that's the formal title of GOSMA. And again, Mr. Napier is the expert on that as well. But this is a networking of administrators and city managers from across Wyoming, Idaho, Montana, the Dakotas, and I think that's the five. They, again, work together, best practices, development, again, unified effort, if I may, to try to bring people together. I'm happy to say that in 2018, in the, in the city of Cody, GOSMA will be holding their annual event and WHAM will be helping out there. WHAMCAT, Wyoming Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers, same as with administrators and managers. They work together, they, they have developmental programs, they have training programs, they have certification programs as well. And just recently, WHAMCAT reached out to Casper College, and they have an agreement in principle where Casper College will be working with our clerks and treasurers across the state for, um, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for their accreditation. So again, Casper steps up and helps us out. Very, very quickly, WHAMJPIC, which is a, stands for Joint Power Insurance Coverage. This is an insurance program working with Blue Cross Blue Shield for smaller communities who cannot go out there and stand on their own and get some type of, of health benefits for their employees. Energy Lease Program through the Wyoming Business Council, where loans can be made at a very low interest rate for energy efficiency, lighting retrofits, window replacements, improvements, energy conservation as well. And the Wyoming Community Gas Organization to bring natural gas at an affordable price and an environmentally friendly resource, uh, to, to communities throughout Wyoming. The Strategic Plan. We met, the, the Board of Directors met in April of this year. We set a, set time aside for a two-year strategic plan. Councilman Powell, Mr. Napier were there creating the, the, uh, the strategic plan, the guidance for us going forward for the next couple of years. The why is the leadership, sets the vision, provides the inspiration for us to move forward as an association. When I talk about the association, it's just not the staff, it's all for the cities and towns. The how, how are we gonna get things done? What's the vision? And then the what, the results of those actions are taken as we implement parts of the, um, the, the strategic plan as well. This collage of words is one of the results of the efforts of the Strategic Plan, and that's the values. We call it the value of WHAMs, but in, in real, the real terms, it's the value of the cities and towns across Wyoming. This is what your Board of Directors think that our values are. This is just a partial list of them as well. We've got probably about another 12 pages that I could add this evening, but these are the key components of what our, uh, our board thinks, and again, representing, excuse me. And again, representing, excuse me, uh, WAM. Goal number one out of the Strategic Plan is to support the needs and common interests of, of our association. Out of that came four sub-goals. First of all, to obtain sustainable funding for cities and towns, uh, by March of 2018. That also leads us into our legislative discussion. Goal number two, secure $105 million in direct distribution for local government for the next biennium. We're going to talk about that extensively here in just a little bit. To conduct a revenue study to, to present to the Joint Revenue Committee as well as all legislators. That is what is on the right-hand part of the screen, and that's the Municipal Finance Report, Volume Two, which is an extension of the Municipal Finance Report that WAM did in October of last year. And the fourth one, this is one of, of, of interest, and that's to identify the needs of our members via a survey. And we're going to be sending that survey out here within the next couple of weeks for our members to respond to, to make sure we are addressing those needs. And we will have those results at our winter workshop in February of, of next year in conjunction with the legislative session. Okay, I broke it. I have an amber light on my advance. Should I go backwards one? I love technology.
That's a warning.
Thank you. Goal number two is to develop a strong unified voice. I talked about the diversity of 99 different members, the needs and what have you. But the idea here is to have that unified voice. So when we go to the legislature, we are trying to get the common interests of all of our members. The question earlier from Councilman Larry, yes, there are different needs, there are different interests, there are different, we have to have types of things. But again, when you spread this across 99 members, we try to have that unified voice. That's very important when we think about unified voice, and that's where people like Councilman Powell come in, where they are the regional director and they reach out within that region to try to share that information as well. Goal number three, build state leadership that understands and supports Wyoming's cities and towns. Now, what does that mean? What does that mean? Couple of three points what this means. First of all, provide training for elected officials at the municipal level who may have an interest or a desire to take it a step up. Maybe they want to become a legislator. Maybe they would like to become one of the five elected state offices that we have in Wyoming. So we are going to have our first session on this, again, at the winter workshop in February, uh, down in Cheyenne. So stay tuned for more information on that. We also want to meet with, with candidates once we get to the general election and inform them about what the importance is of cities and towns, what those needs are, so they have an understanding. And also, we hear from them as far as what they think about cities and towns. Again, that advocacy, that influence, that sharing of information. And last of all, just provide communications that helps educate state officials. Hello, Jolene. Oh, I'm back. No, I'm not. Okay. Municipal Finance, uh, Report, Volume Two. Now, we're going to get into the meat of the legislative discussions, if I may. After the 2016 report and after the 2017 legislative session, WAM was asked to come up with some options, some recommendations. We were asked, uh, this by legislate, by the legislative body. What are some of the options since we are struggling with funds? We, the state of Wyoming, we, the 99 municipalities. Not only what are some of these options, but will these be sustainable? How can we help ourselves? How can we have the state legislature help us be able to manage and do good governance in our, in our respective communities? So I'm going to hit a few of the highlights with respect to some very basic finance facts from a municipal standpoint. Wyoming cities and towns have limited revenue generating capacity. By that we mean, we do not have by statutory means the authority to go out and raise revenue locally, except for, we can set our fees on solid waste management, water and sanitary sewer fees, we have the optional taxes, but outside of that, we have no other ability. Smaller towns who may not have a retail base, they rely on direct distribution from the state or property tax revenues. That's their bread and butters for some of our very small towns. Thirty, excuse me, the state of Wyoming, municipalities in the state, we are the most dependent of all states, including the District of Columbia, from a federal standpoint, on state financing. And we, on the flip side of that coin, we have the least authority to raise revenues when we compare ourselves across the nation, when we compare ourselves to bordering states, as well as three other states, North Dakota, Oklahoma, and Texas, who are energy-based economy states as well. So our hands are somewhat tied by statutory requirements and by size. So we chose to collaborate and, uh, take a look at some of those options, looking at those other states. We created a team within Wyoming of, again, city managers, administrators, financial directors, treasurers, and some elected officials to work on this report. And it went through several iterations, as you could imagine, but we finally came up with the report, and we're going to touch on, base on a couple of those. This, I love this slide, okay? It's pretty obvious, 100% of Wyoming citizens are served by a local government, either a municipality or a county. And you can see the percentage, percentage there of where residents reside, municipality or residents. But the bottom of this thing is the key message, in my opinion. A city and town will either directly or indirectly serve 100% of those Wyoming citizens. And I think that is, that is a message that I think the legislators much need to know, and that's what we've been working on. So here are the WAM recommendations, and now we're getting you these legislative, uh, ideas and what is important as we go forward. This report, this Municipal Finance Report was sent to you earlier in September electronically. It is also on the WAM website. And if you need additional copies, just let me know, we'll make sure you get it. The first, the first item there in the recommendation goes back to our strategic plan, secure at least $105 million for local government for the next biennium, until other funding options may be in place. Now, the $105 million is the same amount that we have in this current biennium. We're not asking for more, we're not asking for less. We're asking for the same amount of dollars, and this is pretty close to the same levels that we received back in 2000, fiscal year 2009, 10 period of time. So again, we're not asking for the world. Another reason that we're asking for this particular amount of money for this particular period of time is any of the other options and recommendations we're throwing out there, it's going to take time to get those in place. They're not going to be ready by July 1st of 2018, when the next fiscal year starts. So it's very important that we have some bridge dollars to be able to continue to serve our residents. Of that $105 million, on an annual basis, $34 million goes to municipalities to share. 99 municipalities share $34 million, 23 counties share $18 million. Folks, I'm sorry, but that's not a lot of money for us to be able to meet those citizens' needs. The second recommendation is take a look at our existing tax laws where we might be able to increase our own revenue generating capacity, sometimes referred to as own source capacity. You have state aid, you have your own source capacity. So what are the five different things that we sent forward for the legislative body to continue, or to consider? Make the current fifth penny or the general purpose tax, the 1% tax, permanent by statutory action. That's not a new tax, it would be just a continuation of tax that would, that would offer about $97 million a year from what we know today. 21 of the 23 counties and municipalities within those 21 counties already have the fifth penny in place. So statutorily, we add, ask the legislator to make that action. Results of that one? No, they will not, they will not take that forward. The reason for that is, in the existing optional tax statutes, we have the ability to make it permanent. Municipalities do not have that option. It takes a collective effort with the county commissioners and the other municipalities as well. That is going to be a struggle. And oh, by the way, we understand this as well, but remember, we were asked for options. What are the different tools that we might be able to use? This takes away from the vote of the people. I don't say that callously if we take that seriously, but this is an option. Property tax increases on residential and commercial property. And I know talking about taxes in Wyoming is pretty taboo, especially when you're talking increases. But the economic climate has changed, times have changed. We can rely on state aid as we have for many decades, even through some boom and bust cycles, things were pretty good. But again, the landscape has changed, so this is an option. If we were to see a 1% increase on residential and commercial property, that'd only bring in $3.6 million across the board. That's not enough to save it, but that might help some, some of our smaller towns who do not have that retail base for sales and use tax. A municipal sales and use tax that would allow municipalities, much like the, the fifth, sixth penny options, to go to the voters to say, on a ballot, we need to raise your taxes by a quarter percent, half a percent, clear up to 1%. Not to put any of these other optional taxes at risk, but we have a specific, a specific need, even for general purpose taxes. This is a very common practice throughout the, throughout the United States. And I wish we had time and I could give you some stories from Mobile, Alabama, and Commerce City, Colorado, how this works. The, the anecdotal information there, it does work. Both of those communities, their aggregate sales tax double what we have here in Wyoming. People still say, okay. The fourth option is to increase the state sales and use tax from 4% to 5%. That would generate roughly $32 million for municipalities and $17 million for counties. That's significant dollars, pretty close to what we're seeing right now through the direct distribution. When was the last time we went from 4% to 5%? When did the state, or excuse me, when did the state legislature change it from 3% to 4%? Any idea what year that was? For an all-expense paid vacation for two, um, WAM's budget, any place in the world?
Eighty-two, maybe?
Ninety-three. Twenty-five years ago. We're one of the lowest, and we take pride in that. That attracts business to Wyoming, we understand that. But again, this is an option. And the last option there is to take a look at what is commonly referred to as a barometer tax. We currently get our direct distribution out of the Legislative Services Reserve Account. That's where our $105 million comes about. That's one of the rainy day accounts, okay? And so the option here is legislators, you put, uh, some parameters on that. When it, when you draw down on that, that, that account, and you get, let's, just for op, just for dollars, you have $100 in there. And when you draw that down to 50, you become a little bit uncomfortable. Impose a tax, that's what it is, impose a tax on the citizens of this state to get it back to $120. Then you remove that, and you've, you've built your fund back up, your rainy, rainy day account, and then you could draw on that. When it gets back down to 50, then you move it up. Again, this is used in other states as well. Increase the cap for severance tax and federal mineral royalties. Wyoming receives the largest dollars amounts coming back from the federal government, and one of the reasons for that is we send a lot of those revenues right back to the feds to try to get it back. The severance tax recommendation, increase it from 100, the cap from 155 to 214 million dollars, federal mineral royalties from 200 to 275 million dollars. That would allow more money available for not only municipal and counties, local governments, but for the state, for the University of Wyoming, for YADOT, for the school foundation program. That's an option. Remove tax exemptions that do not support economic development, that do not support economic development. We currently have 39 exemptions, 39 exemptions on state laws. Some of those have been there for decades of time, and they were very good, and some of them are still very good exemptions. But if they do not support economic development, which they were intended, and we're holding back on some dollars that might come into the coffers of the state of Wyoming, take that into consideration. Joint Revenue Committee is looking at this. The one that they're looking at, which may or may not go, is that's the repeal or the recension of the state, uh, sales tax on food, okay? That went away about, uh, this is what, 2017, about 12, 13 years ago. If that was reinstated today, $68 million would be realized on tho, those projections and everything else. Our neighbors to the south, that other state, they have 14 exemptions. 14 compared to 39. So again, something that needs to be looked at. Extraterritorial jurisdiction, surface water drainage systems, real estate transfer fees. These are just a couple of the other items that were in this, that are in this report. Extraterritorial jurisdiction, that was looked at by the Joint Corporations Committee last week in Sundance. Again, Casper sent up a couple of experts to testify on that, along with my comments, along with other comments, and the information we put forward, the Joint Corporations Committee did pass a bill that says, city, municipalities, towns, you have no say whatsoever in county development. So that one just shuts us out completely. We're not done with that one. We're going to continue work with the County Commissioners Association to get some flexibility back, because the development that takes place outside of Casper in the Trona County could have a huge impact on those folks, just on, the city residents, just on the other side of that border. We've heard, we've heard the war, or the story about the pig farm going in right next door to a great neighborhood. Well, that could be an exaggeration. But the whole reason about this is the alignment and the future development of their, that aligns with existing city services, whether it's rights of ways, with the streets, sidewalks, connection to water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer services as well. That's important, because we should take care of that when the development takes place now, instead of worrying about it five years when it potentially could be annexed into the city. Surface water drainage system, something that just started, uh, in April about this time of year. Corporations Committee, same thing. Comeback life. Joint Corporations said, no, thank you, we're not ready for that one yet. We're still not done, uh, on that one as well. Okay. Real estate transfer, nothing to worry about here. Uh, this is really a, an issue that's been brought forward for principally Teton County in Jackson, uh, trying to raise funds. It could be an opt-in or an opt-out provision, if this even goes forward into next year or into this session. This is, this screen is a little bit hard to read, but again, this is on WAM's website. This we get, this is a legislative tracking tool. We started that just this year in the 2017 session, where you can get onto the website and you can track bills. The status of those, you can even add comments to that. And we've had that work pretty well in 2017 with this program and its infancy stages. It's, we're making some enhancements, so, but it's instantaneous communications when we get it, we make the updates and everything else. And the important part, as I said, you can provide your comments back on, we support, we don't support, or we have an issue with this part of it. That's, and you'll get more information on that as well. So what I'd ask us to do then is then let's turn our attention to the handout that you have there with respect to WAM's legislative agenda. And if I can find mine. And I think, again, Councilman Larry, this is going to get, you know, perhaps into, into your wheelhouse right now. Some of this we've already talked about. Before we go here, let me, let me back up. The Municipal Finance Report, we just glossed over. Next week, December the 6th, we'll be back here in Casper for a Region Four meeting. It's, uh, we're having it over at the Ramcoa Inn. We'll go through more detail in that report. We also invite legislators from the region, so they'll have a, a, an update, update on this as well. So if your schedules allow, which, thank you for allowing me time again tonight, please come. We'll probably be there for about a couple of hours, and we'll make this as, as informative as possible. But here's the draft of where we stand right now, that your Legislative Leadership Committee, your Board of Directors have been working on. The first five is what we just talked about, uh, coming out of the Municipal Finance Volume Report, uh, Volume Two. That first priority is to secure the 105 million that we talked about earlier. And then we've already talked about two for four. At our annual membership business meeting in Gillette, uh, in the early part of June this year, these are the resolutions that came forward. The numbers and the, and the parents just identified the year, and of course, the resolution number that went, came forward. Then we went through and we prioritized those resolutions of the importance for Wyoming's municipalities, cities, and towns. I'm just going to touch on a I'm just going to touch on a few of these with respect to your time. We've already talked about number one, that's the 105 million dollars. The Joint Revenue Committee did agree to send forward a committee bill supporting the 105 million. Then after reflection, that's more of a Joint Appropriations Committee action, because it's revenue to municipalities, but it's dollars or expenditures from the state coffers. So the Joint Revenue Committee did send a letter of support for the 105 million dollars to the Joint Appropriations Committee. On December the 11th, Appropriations Committee will hear about local government funding, and needless to say, we will be there, you know, pushing for this 105 at a minimum. Number two, a resolution creating an optional general, optional general revenue tax option. That's the municipal finance tax option. I doubt that's going to go anywhere. I doubt any tax increases are going to go this year. The political climate, to be frank, I don't believe in it right now. Item number four, a resolution advocating the non-transient lodging tax exemption. Right now, I can, and this is very common for construction workers, for legislators, who are only taking some lodging for us, for a short period of time. It's an exemption, they don't have to pay sales tax on that. So we are suggesting remove that. That one might have some, some possibilities. Also in red there, you'll see the Office of Tourism is proposing a statewide 1% tax on the hospitality industry. And the hospitality industry is not only lodging, it's restaurants, it's fast food, it's ski tickets, it's special events like you have here at, at the Convention Center or Frontier Days down in Cheyenne. There would be a sales tax imposed upon that. We do support that concept and that idea with two provisions. One, it does not harm whatsoever local lodging tax and options, which we have across the state. And the other part of this, the good news, is this takes the Office of Tourism out of the general fund budget. They become an enterprise unit, they stand on their own two feet, which means there's roughly 15 to 17 million dollars more for the general fund and those people that receive funds from, again, that general fund, which could be municipalities. Number five, to create an agreement of lodging taxation. And this is where, and you can see the Airbnb, a service would go ahead and make arrangements with, with Councilman Powell, if I may, and he's going to use somebody's residence to rent. He doesn't have to pay taxes on that. Airbnb stepped up and said, we'll start collecting those taxes. So that one was accomplished without a whole lot of effort.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Then, if I may, resolutions number nine, and in the back of the page, excuse me. Oh, the malt beverages, again, commonly referred to as some of the sin taxes, alcoholic beverages, cigarettes, tobaccos products. Those are going through the jet revenue committee with some potential for some small increases. But it's certainly not going to close the gap on the, the overall economic need we have. On the, the reverse side then, member requests that came in from, from municipals and towns for us after the, the annual meeting is to take a, a look at the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which we've already talked about. The second one, unemployment benefits for qualified seasonal workers on an employer basis. What the heck does that mean? Casper has been much involved in the discussions on this one as well. You have seasonal workers, the most common one are, are young people that are working in parks. But they work for a limited part of the time in a specific season, and once they terminate their employment, because they go back to school, there's no longer need for their services, they can apply to get unemployment insurance under current state statute. So in essence, municipalities and other users in, you know, private sector is paying for no services. So this bill did pass through the Joint Labor Committee to say you can either opt in or you can opt out to pay for that insurance or not pay for that, that, those benefits. The construction industry says, we like to have this because then we can bridge our workers, because we can't do a lot of, of outside work during the summer or the winter season. We understand that. That's why there's an opt-in, opt-out provision. So we can save ourselves thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for not having to pay for that. So hopefully that one might go through. Let's see, we already talked, I think, about the, the rest of those of any significance. And then the, the bottom half of this is just a partial list, and again, of, of items we've touched about that we've tried to put in a, some type of a priority, and again, a way that you might be able to track some of these bills. So gentlemen, in the time, that, that's kind of the story where we stand right now. Lot more going on at the legislative level, needless to say. But if you can get out next week, December the 6th, a little bit more detail for discussions. With that, I'll try to answer questions that the members of the council may have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. Questions, I have Sean. Chris?
Why a food tax? And how much would the food tax be?
If the food tax, the current exemption was rescinded, it would place that back on the sales tax. So it would go right into all of the other purchases that you make. Clothing that is, that has a state sales use tax. So again, depends on the, the amount of food that you might purchase from, from a local grocery store, and then what that dollar amount would be based on either whether you're at 4%, 5% or 6% in your respective community.
Right, my issue is, I mean, food's already expensive and this is only going to hurt the poor people. So I don't know why we'd be even advocating for a food tax, it's ridiculous in my opinion. I'm not mad at you, I just, I just have, I, I, I have a problem with taxation in general, but on food? I mean, if it...
Let me try, let me try to at least give a little information, okay? I don't like taxes either, I like to keep as much money in my pocket as I possibly can. But you may remember when the sales tax, the, was, the sales tax on food was removed, the state legislator said, we will backfill you. We have enough funds, we will help the population, they will have more disposable income where they're going to spend it elsewhere, and we will backfill your loss. Okay? Good intention, but the follow-through didn't happen. A lot of people call this a regressive tax. Every tax could be defined as regressive. I think you, you, Councilman Johnson, you bring up a great point about the poor. Folks that are on the stamp program right now, who are the poorest of the poor, they do not have to pay sales tax by federal law. They're already protected in that. So it's that next level up that may, from a, from an economic or, their household income could be impacted on this. But again, and, and thank you for not being mad at me, these were options that we sent out for them to consider. And that's what that whole discussion was about. Take a look, the climate's got to change. We were told to think out of the box.
I agree, but food, it's kind of a necessity.
And I have some friends who'll say, don't tax my alcohol either.
Exactly, don't, yeah, get rid of it. Shrink the size of government, get rid of the taxes.
Chris and...
Get rid of services, perhaps.
Chris and then Dallas.
Love this discussion, thanks for the conversation, kind of a libertarian.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I feel like I should call you mayor.
How about calling you Rick?
I don't know, okay, well.
Be comfortable.
This kind of goes along with what Sean was saying, with 99 different entities. And I don't always agree with everything that Wham puts out as a whole. Has there ever been, I'm sure that even by region, there's, there's different needs and strengths and weaknesses. You know, Region Four or Casper or Sheridan, these are what we support, so that a legislator could look at it and we, you know, they could say, okay, well. You know, Casper's not so much in favor of the food tax, the liquor tax, which hadn't been changed since prohibition. Probably can go up a little bit. Is, is there anything like that, or is it just a general picture to everybody or to the elected body from all 99?
Mayor, through you, excellent question, common question as well. Because what, and you remember that one slide, one slide, one size does not fit all. And yes, there are differences. And that's why we go through the process we go through through our Legislative Leadership Committee to vet the bills and everything else. By our bylaws, the Board of Directors have the overall responsibility to set the legislative agenda, and then we move it forward. You also might remember one of the slides coming out of our strategic plan to try to have a unified voice. Now, if you come from a family of five or six people, you'll never have a unified voice. Now, if you have a family of 99 municipalities and multiple elected officials within those municipalities, it's going to be difficult. But you also remember one, our, our first part of our mission statement is to advocate for the common interests. Now, what may help Casper may not help Sheridan, and vice versa. And so, yes, there are differences as well. I would also share with you, up until about 2015, we heard from legislators frequently that we don't know where Wham stands. We don't know what your positions are. We were more reactive than we were proactive. And so we've tried to change those, that, those dynamics as well, is to let legislators, that our elected officials know what municipality needs are. And that's, that's a very fair question, sir, and common question.
Dallas?
So how much money is in the Wyoming Mineral Trust Fund?
What did I hear, 800? The, the most recent Craig Report, right, 800 million to a billion, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember that, but it's, it's, it's up there. It's up there.
So has Wham done anything to ask the legislature about utilizing that money in times like these?
Yes, sir. Again, I think if, if I can kind of rephrase that, why don't you use legislative body, why don't you use rainy day account funds? Okay?
No, no, that isn't my question.
But yes.
I'm repriming my question. My question is, have you gone, has Wham gone to the legislature and says, we want to use this money? Rather than, all I've heard is the easy things that everybody asks for, raise, they raise taxes on alcohol and food and booze and all this stuff, and some of these other little piddly taxes that all it does is annoy everybody, and the legislature isn't going to vote them in anyway. So, but what are you doing about going to the big bunch of money that's sitting there and getting answers as to why they won't cut any loose and what our problems are with the, with the cities? Instead of, it almost sounds to me like we're going there with these little begging bowls. And you, you had one screen that you put up that said, you know, everybody lives in the city, and we're all benefited by this, you know, we all live under these cities, and that's what people understand. They come down here because they want to put their shops downtown and they talk to us about it. So rather than tax all these people, what about, Casper was notorious. They've been spending $4 million a year of their, of their, of their fund. And we finally, I guess, the managers put a stop to that. So what's happening with all this money that's sitting there? And what is Wham doing about getting information and getting that out to our people as to why it isn't being used? They probably have a great reason, but I think the public, it's the public's money and they have a right to know what to do. If we have this huge, huge savings, we're not using any of it, and now you want to hit us with all these little taxes. Is Wham doing anything about that?
Yes, sir. Mayor Portem, through you again, the answer, and I apologize for trying to rephrase the question, not intention. But yes, we have been talking about that, and the word that is used is diversions. And we take the money away from those funds. And we take a look at some of those trust accounts and everything else. Statutorily, you cannot, you cannot touch those dollars for other purposes. But it was created by statute, it can be adjusted by statute, and yes, we have been talking about that. Again, diversions, taking the dollars out of what those purposes were originally intended to, and to meet the needs, not only for municipalities, but for other entities. Education, of course, as we know, is one of the biggest discussion topics going into this legislative session, possibly there. The university is hurting for funds as well, community colleges. So, yes, there has been discussions about diversions.
So what do you think? I don't think they're going to let you into the Wyoming Trust, Mineral Trust Fund, because I don't think anybody really realizes how bad this can get. I hear, I hear the governor saying he thinks it's tapering off. He, he could be right. I don't feel it in my blood after having lived here for 70 years. I don't feel that it's, that it's tapered off, but who knows? But when you're sitting there with this big, huge savings account as opposed to raising taxes, what are the legislators, what are the legislators telling your people that you send to talk to them and ask them about this? What are they saying?
It's something that we are looking at. There's no commitments coming out yet. We live in a very conservative, fiscally conservative state. And I've, I've made several presentations, and excuse the way I'm going to say this, but in Wyoming, my experience changes heck. Can I use another word instead of heck? Okay? It's hard to get change. So again, to try to answer that question, it is something we are looking at. Is it something that will happen? Do not know. With respect to the governors, who, by the way, has since day one he started campaigning, has been one heck of a great supporter for local government. He has not wavered from that, so I applaud him and thank him for that. Is he cautiously optimistic, like many of us are, based on the October Craig Report that does show some upward trends, some very good news, better news, I should say?
What's your gut feeling though on whether they're going to cut the 103 million to 50?
Anything is possible, but I'm...
You've got to face that reality.
But I'm cautiously optimistic on that direct distribution amount.
What happens if they do? How are you helping the cities of Wyoming? What do you have to do to adjust to handle that problem?
It's, it's the same that Casper and the other municipalities have already been doing for the last several years. They are, they've, we've already been adjusting, we have smaller, and we, I just sent this report to a, to a House of Representative person who, who the word is, local government is growing. We know that is not true. How is it not growing? You take a look at the number of full-time employees that municipalities have. You, we saw it here, and we saw it, it's been declining and now plateauing. You look at our budgets, they have not continued to grow. You look at some of the services that have been perhaps done away with or reduced. Local government is not growing. So I wish I could stand here and tell you this evening that feel good about it, it's going to happen.
Well, I don't feel good about it.
I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to get the 105 million dollars.
I hope we do, but I don't think you're going to. And the other side of that is, is how, what, what is Wham doing to educate cities on how to manage decreasing budgets?
Again, we have, over the years, we have had programs at our summer conventions, at our winter workshop on financial management, record keeping, budgeting, trying to understand the state budget as well. And you will have some of those programs at the winter workshop as well. And so, excuse, I'm, this is going to sound rude, and it's not intended to be, but I mentioned earlier about regional directors talking with legislators. It's also very, very important for local elected officials to talk to their legislators. When they saw, the Joint Corporations Committee saw three people from Casper last week. They, legislators love to hear from their local folks. These legislators represent the constituents in this area. They like to see elected officials, they like to see those staff members as well, more than they probably would like to hear from an executive director for the 99th time this summer, okay? So when you have an opportunity to bring in your legislators and talk about the issues important to Casper, or you see them at church, or after church, not during church, or you see them at a restaurant or a civic or a social function, ask them for five minutes of their time and help us, as we do, help educate them as well.
What would you think, what would you think about Casper hiring their own lobbyists to go down there? A professional lobbyist to go down there and address these issues just for the city of Casper? How would you feel about that?
My personal thought? I don't think it's necessarily a wise investment. And so, not just because I'm in this position, you heard earlier about a unified voice. I served as the mayor of Cheyenne, we also had this discussion as well. I have, I don't know if you've done any research as far as what a lobbyist will cost you on an hourly or a contract basis, but it's going to cost you probably more than your overall dues and the other benefits that I think you get from, from Wham as a whole, just not for legislative activities. You may think I'm biased in that, that response, but I do believe that. And it has nothing to do with my job security anyway, that's not important.
So I just want to start moving things, we've got staff here...
So I just want to start moving things, because we've got staff here that need to get home to their families, and it's getting late. And so, we had a pretty late one last Tuesday, but I wanted to give an opportunity for anybody else who wanted to talk.
Mayor Protem. Rick, I don't think I've ever asked you this question, but, and it may not be a fair question, but in a given calendar year, how many legislative committee meetings do you and your staff attend?
Outside of the legislative session? Hmm. The reason I say that is during the legislative session, 20 days or 40 days, we are there 20 days or 40 days, and we are trying to cover multiple committee meetings, because they run back to back, okay? This has been an exceptional year for legis, interim legislative activities. I'm going to try to answer this in, in a really goofy way. My wife was lamenting, lamenting to me Sunday night, "In the last six weeks, I have been home, spent three nights at home, including weekends." Okay? I slept in my own bed three nights. So, legislative meetings, they've been very, very, so. Councilman, I am going to guess it's, it's got to exceed 30 to 35 this year only. And remember, like the Joint Revenue Committee, they've already had three committees, or three meetings, two days each. And they'll have one more in the beginning of December, next week. Joint Corporations, Joint Transportation, Joint Travel, Joint whatever. It's just not one meeting a day, they're usually two days, and three or four times throughout the year. So, a lot.
That's the inverse question. How many days do you get to spend in the office? I'm kidding.
Well, thanks to Mr. Napier, I was up in one of his offices, and I was working this afternoon, so, it's called weekends, too, so. Just like you all, your job never stops.
And the other thing is, you're working for 99 cities.
Yes, sir. 99 municipalities and multiple elected officials, as well as staff, as well as staff, so.
I'd like to have a lobbyist that just works for us.
Can I just want to do an anecdote? Oh, thank you, because that reminded me. Mr. Duchin was up here earlier talking about cell phones and wireless and everything else, broadband, very important. About two weeks ago, we had our first meeting, and I'm going to come back to that interest there. Had our first meeting with the telecom industry here in Wyoming. Your Sprint's, your Verizon's, your wireless, your Independence, your CenturyLink's, your Spectra's, all of them. Because they're trying to figure out broadband in Wyoming as well. I also heard broadband is not necessarily active in downtown Casper. That's what we're working on. And to see how we can do this legislatively. We will, we have another meeting, I think it's in about another week, but we're also going to have these folks coming in from the telecom industry on a panel, to be able to share with our members the importance of what they do. They're going to also have an opportunity to hear the importance of what municipal government does. So, if I may, back to this question. A lot of times, their lobbyists don't agree, and they're all in the same industry. So again, back to that, hopefully, a united voice, unified voice, excuse me.
One more question, Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
This may not be a fair question either, Rick, but I know sometimes you'll go to a committee meeting, and a legislator will say something where you're thinking, "How could they think that, or how could they not know what we all know about our cities and towns?" And, and can you think of any of the misperceptions or knowledge gaps that you've had an opportunity to correct that were maybe even surprising to you, that the legislators were voting, and were really very much uninformed?
I think, I mean, I could come, but you never, first of all, you never correct an elected official. We try to educate and inform, and give them, give them the best information we have.
Let's say under-informed, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Not misinformed.
Yeah, that's right, so. But I think the one that comes to mind real quickly, and we're still dealing with it today, and that's the extraterritorial jurisdiction bill that is going through. Not understanding the importance of the alignment and what the investment is, and who's going to have to potentially pay for the improvements to that property if it is in fact annexed into the city, even if the city wants it to be annexed in. If it's not built to at least city standards or town standards today, who's going to pay for those improvements later on? It's going to be all the folks here. So I think there was a misunderstanding of what that bill was going through at that point in time. In fact, I feel, I know that by a couple of legislators that I talked with and texted as well. So, that's an example. I think there is a, I won't call it a misunderstanding, but perhaps a knowledge of all of the services that a municipality provides, and the importance of those provided, and you are, one of our obligations is to provide, you know, those basics of health, you know, welfare, and safety. Where do we start making those tough decisions of not providing those basic responsibilities and those obligatory services that go along with that? And we, I, you know, I can be here till midnight talking about how other communities in other states have had to reduce their services to the tune of cutting off half of their streetlights. No longer irrigating their golf courses or their parks, which are important amenities, not only for residents, but for potential businesses as well. Making Casper and the other municipalities a destination point. So, again, just, just a couple of examples to a balanced question.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming down, and are you staying the night here, or are you heading back?
Heading back. We've got a seven o'clock meeting, so I'll probably have my face in my oatmeal, but we'll be there, so.
Drive safe.
Again, thank you. I appreciate the time that you've allowed me to speak, and I hope what I've shared has been of some benefit. Questions? Don't hesitate to yell back at us. Carter knows how to get a hold of me.
Thanks, Mr. Kason.
This shows that the Mineral Trust Fund has 6 billion in it, not 800 million. This is what he's come up with. The market value of the Mineral Trust Fund as of March 31st, 2013, was 6 billion. So there's billions in there.
There's, well, aggregately, there's billions everywhere, okay?
But you guys ought to be aware of the exact amount of that money, because then you can present proper information to those guys as to why they may, and how they may be able to divert some of that into city coffers, without worrying about taxing some lady's food.
Thanks, Mr. Kason. Be safe. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Napier.
Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you. Just to, to try to bring some assignment to, to what we just heard today, if I could. It, it will be incumbent upon the City Council to adopt a legislative agenda. And we've given you a memo or two, most recently, including your most recent packet, that would suggest what staff believes that agenda ought to be. And as a matter of fact, we'll be meeting with our delegation, if you will, in a, a, a meeting setting where we will propose to them that we want their help in supporting our legislative agenda. If you were to look back at your memo, I'll review real quickly what we would suggest that is. We would suggest that instituting a stormwater utility option for cities and towns is important. We would suggest that maintaining the formula for direct distribution, as well as the amount that Mr. Kason described today, is important and needs to be supported. We would also suggest that pushing back against extraterritorial jurisdiction legislation that is out there, that would effectively repeal cities and towns' capacity that we currently enjoy, is important. And we would also suggest that looking for ways to stabilize funding for local government, and not necessarily raising taxes to do so, is important as well. And I would also tell you that that direct distribution is a part of that, but there are a couple other ideas that I think Council ought to consider also. With the information that you've been given tonight, and the information that you can collect, not only here and in the discussions we're going to have moving forward, and as well in the Region Four meeting that's coming up on December 6th, we need a culmination of direction from this body, so that we can present that message to our delegation. It can include what I've talked about tonight, of course. It can be expanded, it can be reduced. But at the bottom, at the end of the day, we need to know what your legislative priorities are, and I'm hopeful that what you got tonight, even though what you got tonight was a major overview of everything that's out there, for the most part, that affects cities and towns. We can certainly respond with regard to information that you would like to see more of, and I would suggest the item number four, stabilizing funding for local government, is one that we should talk about further in preparation for our legislative agenda presentation to our delegation in January. Beyond that, however, do you have any other direction you would like to give me tonight, so I can prepare for that eventual conversation that we need to have?
Dallas.
I think that you ought to have very firm ideas of belt-tightening measures, should they be needed. So we don't have to sit around here and argue about it, and, and not, and be bewildered about it. When I was on the hospital board, I fought very hard, and then finally put together belt-tightening measures, which everybody did not want to do, but I persisted, so, you know, they finally did it. And the CFO of that hospital years ago says, "You know, we use that for the next seven years." And we, and we, we did a lot of what you guys discussed at that time. So to have the map there, ready to go, what, what, what may be your next step with belt-tightening measures, because he doesn't address belt-tightening measures. But that legislature's going to be tough on the money, and they're not going to want to cut, they're not going to want to add new taxes to people. And they're going to try to force the belt-tightening on us, and I'd like to be a head of, of cities, and I, and I'm hoping WAM, if they're having all these meetings that, that they apparently have, they should be educating these smaller towns that don't have CFOs and city managers with your experience to assist them in what they're going to have to be doing to exist and get us through really tough times. And I sure would like to see us have our own, and this isn't anything about WAM, it's just we have our own lobbyist who understands our issues, that doesn't have to deal with 99 other problems that could be different. We have one person that can go down there and that knows some of these legislators, could save that 103 million. But when you spread that out to 99 cities and towns, I don't know how loud a voice we have for Casper. Because Casper needs a big voice, because it's either the first or second largest city in the state. And I think it's something we have to consider, if we really want to get something done down there.
Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think it'd probably be appropriate if we gave these ideas some thought, emailed them directly to the city manager, and then they would all be presented back to us in, in entirety, and frankly, I'm thinking of streamlining this meeting tonight, so.
Good idea.
Does that sound good? We can get that? Great. Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
So moving quite, moving along, I've got a couple options. Do we want to, Carter, are you looking just for direction, whether to have for council leadership? Otherwise, I mean, that's all you're looking for tonight, right?
Mr. Mayor Protem, the idea with this item is to let you know that we're approaching the time where a decision needs to be made about the leadership of the council for calendar year 18. And historically, that decision has typically taken place in a meeting in December. And so, our purpose for tonight was to give you that heads up, give you a brief review of the rules as they've existed in the past, if you'd like that. But, but certainly, setting a date as to when that decision should be made by this group is probably most paramount with regard to this item.
Okay. Do we need a brief rule? I know, do we want to expedite the meeting tonight, since there's three gone tonight? How do we want to proceed?
Are these rules that are printed out?
Could we just get a copy of that, Will? Would that be possible?
We can do that. I think a lot of the, the actual nuts and bolts of how it's been, is I think almost been a, I would call it an oral tradition, as far as how the, the paper ballots have been handed, handled, and so on. And I think with three of you at least have been through this before. But the gist of what we'll need, or would like tonight is, it looks like basically December 12th would probably be the best date for this straw poll to happen. And when I was, yeah, the, the municipal code only talks about the first meeting in January is when the actual formal election will happen. The rest of it's been just a traditional process. And I was checking, I think I talked to, I think it was you, Charlie, or Councilman Powell, sorry, and Mayor Humphrey. And what Mayor Humphrey suggests is maybe make the 5th the deadline for folks to submit their interest in either mayor or vice mayor. And then the 12th, council will be presented with their informal straw poll ballots. And I don't, so I guess if that's a direction that works for everybody, that gives you what, a week-ish to decide if you want to run, and another week to discuss internally.
Is everybody good with that? Gives us a week?
We vote by written ballot.
It's a, it's a secret ballot. It's officially an informal straw poll, but traditionally, the results of that poll have been reflected in the formal vote at the first meeting in January.
And how do we, how do we know who we're voting for?
People submit their names, and then the names are on the ballot.
So if all nine people submitted their names for mayor, they'd all be on the ballot, and then it'd all be on the ballot.
And then we'd have multiple rounds of elimination until we got to a majority.
So then
It's not, it's not that you don't make a motion to make, have somebody in, who wants in, says, "I want to be..."
It's been a mix of volunteerism and nomination, if I'm not mistaken. I'm pointing to the veteran members of council to correct me if I'm wrong on how the process has been handled, because it was always handled by my predecessor. That's my understanding of it.
So maybe we should have better rules on how we do this.
It's worked. It's worked.
It works?
We've always done it that way.
Don't say that to him.
You love that phrase.
I want to prove we can change when we ask our citizens to change.
So if you're interested in leadership, have inform, do you want that sent to, the name sent to?
Probably the manager's office.
Manager's office, and then that'll give a week for people to do the campaigning, or whatever else that goes in with that, if you will? Or if you want to nominate somebody.
Just so you know, I'm not interested, because I haven't been elected. If I get elected someday, I might change my mind.
God bless you.
The one other bit of direction, my understanding in the past is sometimes it's been handwritten ballots, or you just write down your choice by, by hand, and then there was another time period where it was pre-printed with just the names of the folks that expressed interest, but my understanding is that was a bit of an issue. So I guess, do you want them pre-printed with those that have expressed interest, or just leave it open to handwrite?
They have a pre-printed, but a box for other.
So if somebody wants to do that?
Somebody wants to write in, then you have that option on there.
The only advantage I see to pre-printed is then it's truly secret, because you can't do the, guess the handwriting thing?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And just have a blank space for a write-in candidate?
I think, I think that's the way it should, I think it should be like a regular election. I think, I don't, I think people, if they want to run, they put in
Cool. Is that enough direction? Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to share? Chris?
I got a, yeah, I'll share. I'm going to put my name in for mayor, just so y'all know. I have a civil service thing tomorrow at 8:30. Where? Does anybody know?
Civil service.
It's for selection of a civil service. Where's it at? Use your, use your words, Steve. Help me out. All right.
That's it. Charlie, have anything? Bobby didn't skip you by. No, you're good. Dallas, you have anything? All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.